Good evening, everyone. Today is Wednesday, March fifth, two zero twenty five. It is now five oh two P M. I like to call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Amani Union High School District. This time, Dr. Zuniga, if you'll take roll call.
Yes, thank you, Board President. Ricardo Padilla, member?
Here.
And member Que win?
Present.
Member Dr. Marita Galvez?
Here.
Member Dr. Ruiz Guzman?
Present.
Member Pedro Briones?
Present.
All present.
All members are present, and we have a full complement of the cabinet as well as legal counsel. At this time, legal counsel, if you will read us into closed session.
Mr. President, the items that the board will be meeting on in closed session tonight, as shown on section A, two of the published agenda, item two A, Government Code Section five four nine five seven, public employee discipline dismissal release, two matters, and item two B, under Government Code Section five four nine five seven point six, labor negotiations for E M U E A. And those are the items for closed session this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Legal Counsel. Dr. Zuniga, are there any public comments on items for closed session?
There are no public comments for the closed session items.
Thank you. At this time, the board will recess into closed session, and we will return at six P M or as close to six P M or thereafter as possible.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome back to the regular board meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Amani Union High School District. Today is Wednesday, March 5th, 2025. It is now 6:01 PM and the board is reconvening out of closed session into regular session. This time, Dr. Zuniga, will you take your roll call?
Thank you, Board President. Good evening, everyone. We will start off with Member Ricardo Padilla.
Here.
Member Qui Wen.
Present.
Member Dr. Marisa Galaviz.
Present.
Member Dr. Luis Guzman.
Present.
Member Florentino Briones.
Present.
And student board member Andrea Pablo.
Present.
Now, everyone is present.
Thank you, Dr. Zuniga. Then, we have a full complement of the board cabinet legal counsel in this session.
Good evening.
Hello, hello. Okay. Good evening. Please stand for this flag salute. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
At this time, the board will recognize Destiny and we have a certificate on behalf of the board and also would like to invite our principal, Mr. Flores, to come up and join us. A couple, a couple pointers for us about Destiny and her success at a rural high school specifically to the recent playoffs at the actual Masters meet, I believe, recently at Wrestling State.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you, first of all. Thank you, members of the board. Thank you, everybody that's in attendance for giving Destiny this opportunity to get recognized for her accomplishments. Doing the flag salute is obviously a great opportunity, but it's well deserved by a great student. She's absolutely phenomenal. I want to share a little bit about what I know about Destiny. First of all, she's a senior, but I want to share a little bit about the success that she had this past week, well, since last Thursday, I should say. She qualified for states and she wrestled at 100 pounds and she, from my conversation with her, she wrestled on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, won three and lost two. And later I found out through father that she lost because she got hurt. So had she not lost, she would have won. At any rate, she did end up placing eighth in the state, eight, and I said, how many students? She said 32. Now, this is for state, not to mention what she did within the league, not to mention what she did within masters, and I'm missing one, I believe, CIF in general. So she's an amazing student, well deserved for this recognition. If I may, Board and Board President, if I may ask the coach to say a few words because he meets with her daily. So, Coach, can you come in please?
Hello, everyone. My name is Contran. I'm Destiny's coach. I also teach at a rural high school and it's my honor and privilege to recognize her today. I first met Destiny about three and a half years ago before summer school. I sent out like 200 flyers. I posted all these things and one little girl showed up. One little girl, under 80 pounds, she showed up and little did I know, you know, our journey would start where she became a leader, a two-time team captain, MVP. This year, her record was, I believe, 40, 44 and 5. She won multiple MVPs at multiple tournaments. Even though when you say she took eighth in the state, this is qualifying from league, from qualifying from CIF, which are over hundreds of schools. And finally, and you know, she was a two-time CIF finalist. She was two-time masters finalist. That's when they take all this, the four CIFs and they wrestle them off in the southern section. She was second there twice and then eighth in the state, you know, as only a four-year wrestler. You know, normally kids that make it to that level, they've been wrestling since they've been four or five years old. So a great accomplishment and just wanted to recognize her and say that we will miss her. But yet she's a legend amongst the girls, you know, so amazing, amazing job.
And on behalf of a rural high school, we do want to give her this medal that we give to outstanding students. It's called Knight's Noe and just so that you know, in the back, it's the words that are on here are pride, courage, honor, excellence, and integrity. And that really is who Destiny, what Destiny is all about. So on behalf of a rural high school, congratulations. Job well done.
I just want to thank all my coaches at Arroyo and then Arroyo High School and also my dad that he's always supporting me. Thank you.
Well, we're really here to recognize you for leading us in the pledge of allegiance today, but this turned into a celebration about your athletic skills as well, which is just wonderful. So on behalf of the board, I'd like to present this certificate of recognition to you, Destiny Wutron, for your contributions to Royal High School as a student leader and for leading the flag salute at our board meeting today. Your commitment to excellence is further demonstrated by your recent qualification and participation in the Wrestling State finals. Your hard work and perseverance serve as an inspiration to your peers and our entire school community. We celebrate your accomplishments and look forward to your continued success. Congratulations from the Almani Union High School District Board of Trustees. And as always, we have a very special lapel pin for you that we present to all of our students that we recognize. Wear it with pride. Always remember you're coming from El Monte. Yes, you are an Arroyo Knight, go Knights, but you are from the El Monte Union High School District. So congratulations. Thank you for being with us tonight. Parents, mama, papa, if you guys want to come down, take some photos. We have everybody scooch in. All right. Thank you, Destiny, for being here tonight. Enjoy the rest of your evening. Drive safe. Stay dry. Okay, at this time, we're going to move on to item number three, approval of the agenda. Before we get to the approval, I do want to mention on regular agenda, item number three. Staff has requested that this item be pulled and be referred back. So with the exception of regular number three, is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Move to approve tonight's agenda, not including item F3.
It's moved by Mr. Padilla as your second.
I second.
Seconded by Mr. Nguyen. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the agenda as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none. Agenda is approved. Moving right along to item number four, consider approval of Board of Trustees' meeting minutes for February 5th, 2025, regular meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve, I'll second.
Moved by trustee Nguyen, seconded by trustee Padilla. Any discussion?
None.
Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes for February 5th, 2025, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none. Item is approved. Item number five, consider approval of Board of Trustees' meeting minutes for February 12th, 2025, special meetings. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
Move to approve.
Moved by trustee Padilla as your second.
I second.
Okay.
Seconded by trustee Dr. Galavies. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving February 12th, 2025, special meeting minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none. That item is approved. Item number six, consider approval of Board of Trustees' meeting minutes for February 19th, 2025, special meeting.
I move to approve.
Moved by trustee Nguyen. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Padilla. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes for February 19th, 2025, special meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none. That item is approved. Thank you. Now moving on to public comments. We have one item tonight. If I could invite Ms. Kathy Aridia and Mr. Chuck Hoffman. While you're working your way up, I will read this. Members of the public who wish to address the Board of Trustees on any matter within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board of Trustees may do so during the public comment portion of the Board of Trustees' agenda. However, pursuant to provisions of the Brown Act, Government Code 54950, the Board of Trustees, except under very specific emergency circumstances, will not be able to act on any matter discussed during public comment portion of the agenda until such matter is properly placed on a future meeting agenda. The Board of Trustees may direct staff to investigate and/or schedule certain matters for consideration at a future board meeting, and the Board of Trustees cannot respond to specific questions from the public. Thank you, Mr. Aridia and Mr. Hoffman. Whenever you are ready, you have three minutes.
Right. Good evening, Board Administration. My name is Kathy Aridia. I'm the president of the Almani Historical Society. This is my partner here, Mr. Charles Hoffman. He's our treasure for the Almani Historical Society. We're here tonight to invite you personally to attend our open house on March 16th. You have a copy of our flyer. You also have a copy of our landmark. We're one of the best little museums for a small-sized city that is in the San Gabriel Valley. A number of our counterparts have gone by the wayside because they don't have enough volunteers to keep their doors open. Mr. Hoffman, besides being our treasure, is also our docent. He is there Monday through Thursday from 10 o'clock to 3:30-ish and he welcomes several people. I believe he said in February, we had 220 visitors. In the next couple of weeks, we will be hosting third graders from some of the schools around our area. Those kids walk to us. So they have a lot of fun. They're usually really hyped up and excited to hear the history of Almonte, but you're welcome to come. We have a number of cool things during the pandemic. Our curator, Sheila Crippen, and Mr. Hoffman revamped several of our displays. We've received other new antiquities that have come into our collection. We have a number of things that have come to us from a Rolls Royce that belonged to and was driven for, what was his name?
Winston Churchill.
Yes, Winston Churchill. We, yes, sorry, I forgot that one. We also have a model Ford touring car. You know what makes it a touring car? There are two seats in there. So when you have 75 kids and two parents, they sit in two seats and they're in that model Ford. We also have a mobile steam engine that was used on the very first parade down Main Street, USA, at Disneyland, opening day July 17th, 1955, which was the best year ever. So we have a lot of history. We will have our entire board there, including Mr. Bionis, who's one of our directors. Please stop by and see us on the 16th from 1 to 5, I'm sorry, 1 to 3 PM. We have people there. We will stay open. Our motto is, if the gate is open, come on in. So thank you for giving us this time and we hope to see you on the 16th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aridia. Thank you, Mr. Hoffman, and I look forward to seeing you on the 16th as well. Dr. Zuniga, do we have any other public comments?
No other public comments.
Thank you. This time we'll move on, move along to communication from union representatives from the Almani Union Educators Association and California School Employees Association, Chapter 11. The representative from EMUEA, welcome, Ms. Basile, EMUEA president.
Hello. Excuse me. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Board members, cabinet, staff and community. I'd like to begin today with a little celebratory, woo! That we've reached a tentative agreement for our 24-25 school year contract. Finally, finally, we did it. While I'm happy that we agreed to a salary increase in the face of districts all around us settling at zero and having rifts all over the place. I'm still dismayed at what we could not agree upon. I'm saddened that we could not address the serious problems of pay equity for 192-day employees. I'm very concerned about our special ed teachers, our school psychologists, our counselors, who constantly have to run against the clock because they're overwhelmed by everything that's been piled on their plates and not enough time to do it. Classroom teachers have similar predicaments as well. I'm frustrated that yet again, we could not address class size without being, without it being held hostage by unrelated issues in the name of uniformity, without academic concern or even any basis in research. But the can has been kicked down the road. Maybe we'll get to them and maybe some other recurring issues next time. Speaking of which, it's been a long bargaining cycle, one of the longest in all the time I've been in this district. We really need to cut down the time it takes to reach a deal. To provide a little backstory to the newer people on the dais, back when I first started in this district over almost, almost 20 years ago, we used to make multi-year deals and finish bargaining before the end of the school year. Right? End of spring semester. We used to have candid conversations about three-year projections and settle on salary increases before July 1st, sometimes even before the May revise. Can you imagine that? I shouldn't have to remind you that those three-year projections still exist today, multiple times a year, in fact, and yet, for a long time now, this district just can't commit to anything until the school year has already begun. Delaying negotiations, in my opinion, unnecessarily, making our staff sometimes work on an expired contract for months. When negotiations take that long, it complicates matters with back pay and retro checks and very often making errors in calculations along the way. Such a headache. I've had numerous conversations with Dr. Zuniga over the years that we need to get back on track. I'll be that broken record. Get back on track with the timelines that our contract even delineates, right? We're already, we're already late sunshining for next year. Once EMUEA has ratified our tentative agreements on our end, as you will ratify this evening, we're ready to jump right in. Sunshine next month. We're ready to go. But the broken record has already been spun on the turntables before we've even started the party. That's sad. People ask me, why can't the district negotiate anything in advance of the school year? I can only guess. Afraid to pull the proverbial trigger, especially when it comes to money? Probably. I get it. Still not right. We should be on time. EMUEA wants those candid conversations in spring semester to come back. We want the kind of transparent communication and professionalism that we deserve by having a fair and timely contract. In this season of WASC visits, I'll say with the appropriate academic language that this is a continued area of improvement. But the data shows that we have made gains in other areas, which makes me hopeful we can repeat those successes in the next bargaining cycle. So that said, I bid you all good night and stay dry.
Thank you, Ms. Basile. We appreciate you being here tonight. This time, we'll move on to oral and written communications from the board and the superintendent. I'll start off tonight with our student trustee, Ms. Andrea Pablo.
Hello. Good afternoon, everyone. So for today, I don't really have much to report out other than my congratulations to the boys' basketball teams who have made it this far. I think from what I know, Self recently lost one of their matches, so I don't think they will be advancing. But other than that, I think it's a really great accomplishment just because in my four years in, at, in this, in my, at my school, I haven't seen that. And then the fact that they also had to compete against schools within our district was also fun. I wasn't able to see the games, but I heard it was fun. And yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pablo. I'll move on to Dr. Zuniga.
Yes. Thank you, Board President Bionis. Again, I want to congratulate the rural high school boys' basketball team who last Friday defeated unfortunately one of our own schools, Rosebeath Panthers. It was a great game to be there in front of numerous fans, parents, students, cheerleaders, you name it. Everybody was there having a great time at Azusa Pacific University. I'm glad to see some of the board members that were there to support as well, along with Mrs. Torres, representing the district office and myself. So I just want to congratulate the boys, but also congratulate Rosebeath High School. Not only did they have the finalists for the boys' basketball team, but they also had the finalists for the girls' basketball team at 4 o'clock game right before the actual boys started at 6 o'clock. Unfortunately, they did not win the championship with the girls'. Unfortunately, they did not win the championship, with the girls did lose to Gabellino, which was a surprise because they had also beat them twice already in the league season play. But we were humbled to say that, you know, these girls had a great run, and I think they're young, they're coming back, and also we expect our Rosebeath boys to be back again, too. Just exciting time for Almonte Union to have three, three programs in the finals all in one night. It's amazing. On Saturday, actually, I attended the girls' soccer championship game at South Almonte High School, so we actually have girls' soccer made that final there, too. They did come up short again, unfortunately, too, but again, being a final in that championship game says a lot about the program. I understand there's only one senior in that team, so there'll be a lot of underclassmen returning. The girls were upset about the game, but we, you know, we were, a lot of fans showed up, parents and families to cheer on to, you know, just to another great season, and I think they'll be back next year again, too. So congratulations, just a wonderful, successful CIF run for all of our teams. We're proud of all of our schools, as demonstrated today with one of our students that made even the wrestling state finals, too. So congratulations as well. I do want to end, just a quick note on, and I did inform the board also, that last week I did attend the LA County Legislative Action Committee. As part of the committee of seven superintendents from the county, we join our county superintendent to advocate in Sacramento for programs, for funding, for a lot of things that are happening at the state level that can greatly benefit our schools, specifically advocate for high schools, as, you know, that's my responsibility, too. I did want to highlight a couple of things that, that affect us as well. Number one, addressing inequities in special education funding and class configurations. I think we have seen that from coast to coast when we go into DC to advocate for special education funding, federal funding to state funding as well, and how that funding gap and its consequences when we have an increase of services to special education students, but yet the funding is not increased, is not go with that increase that we have to be responsible for from the general fund, too. Again, the solution is to increase and then obviously targeted funding from the state level to further support our special education students. Second, expanding dual enrollment access. I know that there's been some good news recently that we were able to move on from a, a, a community college who is not able to provide the service and then go into another one, but it's still a formal process. What we can improve on is that why not have that open enrollment mentality, like if we have a good thing, what a, a college that wants to do business with us, why not have that right to do that? So same thing that happens here at our schools, you know, we have open enrollment, our kids can go anywhere, there's a timeline. So we're asking for a little bit more flexibility to expand dual enrollment partnerships within our school district and also other partnering community colleges, too. Third, addressing the link between chronic absenteeism and student mental health. We understand that, you know, in response to the return of the pandemic, with the challenges of chronic absenteeism and the underlying conditions of mental health challenges are a major, students are, you know, coming with such as depression, anxiety, ADHD, PTSD, bipolar disorder, OCD, there's a lot, eating disorders that our, our kids are facing, autism and other severe psychiatric disorders, too. There is a major problem with mental health as a barrier to attendance. So we're asking the state to find a solution to have a comprehensive mental health approach to educate not only our families, support our students, but also how we can further support our staff who are providing these services at the school level, too, amongst the various things that we are supporting our students with. So that is important to us, too. And then the other item that actually, that is also important to highlight today is sustaining effective student interventions through the educator block grant. We know that that's been invaluable after the Esther Fund, funds have, you know, sunsetted, and how that educator block grant can further support the ongoing learning recovery. You know, it's ongoing still, interventions that are required still. And also equity in education depends on, on it only, the wealthier districts with local resources get that funding, and then widening the opportunity gaps, too. So the solution to this, to maintain funding through the educator block grant as well. And you also have, may have heard about the Teacher Effectiveness Grant that is proposed, being proposed by the governor in their, in the January proposal. We think it's a good thing for us as a district to further support the professional development opportunities for our educators, too. But I think that one of the things that we will need better support in is how to directly support teachers where there's the most need as well, since it's so broad in its sense. I think having greater conversation at the state level about supporting increased teacher capacity in real time, for example, improves student achievement more rapidly through actually investment in our professional development sessions, and also having just a robust system overall to gather more input, because it's going to come quick and we need to be prepared to roll out that Teacher Effectiveness Grant that we can benefit from, starting, you know, July 1st and moving forward to. So we anticipate that support. We're also hoping that at the end of the day, it'll benefit all of us, too. And last but not least, modernizing, modernizing career pathways to include industry certifications. CTE has been a great thing and honestly a highlight in our district as a, you know, college and career readiness, but also at the same time, we understand that the challenges under CTE is the certification, the certification that we have good people that want to teach these, these actual trades on campuses, but yet they go through a lot of roadblocks when it comes to the credentialing, and they just back out of it and say, not for me, I can't invest that time, I've done a lot of years of service and I'll be happy to help, but it's just, just, we, we need a greater support system in the state level to help us through the commission on teacher credentialing, how to streamline those actual credentialing opportunities for our educators to support CTE pathways, too. So I think those were the biggest highlights that I took from having that opportunity to be in Sacramento, and I do want to thank the board for their support in allowing me to participate, along with the county superintendent, Dr. Duarte, too. So that's it, President.
Thank you, Dr. Zuniga. Thank you for going out to Sacramento to advocate on behalf of our students and our schools. Move on to trustee Nguyen, and just a reminder for the trustees to please keep comments to five minutes.
I tried to best fit it in five. Okay, I wouldn't report it out. On Friday, February 21st, 2025, I went to AAPI Leadership Legislative Caucus Summit at Warner Brothers. In present, Congressman Judy Chu, Mike Eng, Mike Fong, Attorney General Rob Bontar, and all the big gun, political big gun from Sacramento, from Governor Newsom. There's a lot of things that's happening, you know, at our education in California is facing a lot of headwind. So according to Miss Congresswoman Judy Chu, we need to, you know, three things we need to do, legislate, litigate and activate. So, you know, that's her motto, and it's very important that we're going to, you know, we see a lot of change and challenges, you know, the next few months. I also attended a day with a trade at Fernando Ladesma with Dr. Zuniga, with President Breones and Dr. Marissa Galvez and Mr. Padilla. And, you know, it's, it's, it's wonderful to see, you know, all the trade person that come together and give information to our student. The first thing I, you know, I and Dr. Lynn, Dr. Lynn was there also, I and Dr. Lynn was at the sheet metal of people, and they looked at, you know, how they designed the duct, use geometry, and he said he's a geometry teacher, and say, you see, everything take math. And the first thing that the student asked, how much money, her name is Angie Flores, make, you know, as a journeyman? I make $185,000. I think it's a good, darn good deal. And how much did the intern get paid? $20, $20, $22? That's equivalent to $45,000, $50,000 for the first year intern. The only problem we have is you need to pass the basic math test. And Tim Hanson is the supervisor that training our kid to pass the test. That's why we, it's so important for us, as a school district, to get everybody act together and promote the math, so they can, the same thing in machinery, the same thing in carpentry, everything started with the math. Listen, listen, Matt, you know, because I say why it needed, I told the machinery, right? Because you need to figure out the low, so otherwise it presents a lot of danger to, you know, to the, you know, in building stuff. And that's wonderful, that's wonderful, and, you know, and I enjoy it very much. The third event I went to is a US Bank grand opening. Dr. Zuniga was there, Dr. Lynn was there, Dr. Laura Rivas was there. I'm so proud of Almonte School District. They received $5,000 donation from the Union Bank. And thank you to Mr. Banyas, the principal, you know, he did a great job, and also to branch manager Sergio Martinez. I give him kudos, not because I'm related by marriage, but he's a great guy, and he, you know, he supports our student, our student intern love him, like him, and he very involved in our community, you know, go everywhere that he supported, you know, and he's, he's a great guy. And, you know, and I'm so proud of Almonte Cheer Team also, they give a wonderful performance, performance. So the last one is I was invited to Founder Day at Encinita. It's an amazing turnout. I mean, the multipurpose room is overflowing with parents and students, and I, I reported to Dr. Zuniga, wow, the parents, the PTAs are so robust, you know, they have no room for, you know, they give you the seat, but I told them, you know, I'm public servant. I give up the seat for all the parents to sit in, because we, as a public servant, we stand up, we're serving our student. So it's so robust, and I don't understand what happened between that school and go to middle school and go to our high school, and the parent involvement just waning out, and I don't understand, and we, we, we need to find out why. And as I told Dr. Zuniga, one day we should go with me, one day, and see how, how robust is their PTA participation, and they raise money and they're very active and everything. And that's how I report, my report for, you know, for today.
Thank you, trustee Nguyen. Moving on to trustee Padilla.
Yes, thank you. I just want to say thank you to the Royal High School band parents. This Saturday, I had the opportunity to attend retiring teacher Joe Mazzaro's retirement party, and I really enjoyed it, had the chance to spend some time with Professor Stela Torres DeSegris and a bunch of parents from a Royal High School that showed so much love and so much appreciation to Mr. Joe Mazzaro. Had a great, a great time there, had the opportunity to meet his husband, a very fine person as well, and a lot of friends and colleagues that have a lot of respect for Mr. Mazzaro. I also had the opportunity to attend a day with the trades at Fernando R. Ladesma High School. First off, I'd like to thank Mr., the principal of Fernando Ladesma High School, Mr. Freddie Artiaga. Thank you so much for being an amazing host, not just to a day with the trades, but for so many activities in the El Monte community. I'd like to thank Dr. Edward Zuniga, our superintendent, for also supporting the event and for attending. I know that those are very long nights for you. Thank you for being there and showing the support for CTE, Career Tech Education, because we do know that some of our students do not want to go off to college, they want to go into the trades, and there's nothing wrong with that. As we've said in the past, some of those professions, as you heard, Mr. Qui Nguyen, make a whole lot more than us educators here. So I was glad to see that. It was the first time that we've had that. I want to thank Mr. Kirk McGuinness for spearheading this whole thing and doing all the behind-the-scenes works and coordinating all of the trades and councils and having them come out. It was the first time that we've done it. We learned a lot, and I know that different people were kind of talking about how we can improve it and make it better for our students, and that was a very, a very fun day to see our families and our students asking a lot of questions. Thank you to our Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, Dr. Michael Lynn. Thank you for being there that night. Thank you to Dr. Rivas for also being there. I really appreciate the collaborative, the collaboration that it took to bring all the trades to one roof at Fernando Ladesma, but at the end, the ones that benefited were our students. So big shout out to the staff at Fernando Ladesma also, being so patient of them holding so many different events, and then just acknowledging our families, our students, and all of the vendors, the volunteers and the staff that came out to, to make it an awesome event. Also had the opportunity to participate in a Read Across Patrero, Read Across America, but they changed it to Read Across Patrero, one of the schools in the Almonte City School District today, and it was a read-in where parents got to come in and read with their children from TK all the way to eighth grade, and it was really a lot of fun to see them come out and bring their blankets and lay them all, lay them all out and read to their kids in so many different languages and just the love that Patrero has for reading. So a big shout out to Principal, oh my God, I went blank on her name, it was Barbara, Principal Barbara at Patrero. Great job to all the teachers, the students and the community. Also, big shout out to Mr. Hatchkey. He's an ESL instructor, English as a second language teacher at Sherpster School. I had the opportunity to visit his class. These are some of the classes that are offered through the Almonte Rosemead Adult School to parents in our community throughout the El Monte City School District. We have a strong collaboration with Almonte Union High School District and Almonte City School District, and there's a big interest in these ESL classes. So thank you to Almonte Rosemead Adult School for partnering and for Mr. Hatchkey for being so patient and so nurturing with all of the parents from Sherpster School that I visited. Also, congratulations to, or before I get to that, I really enjoyed watching a Royal High School, not a Royal High School, Almonte High School. I screwed this all up. South Almonte High School versus Rosemead High School in the semifinals. I was sad to see South Almonte High School lose in basketball, varsity basketball. We know that South, Rosebeath High School went on to play Arroyo, and I want to congratulate Arroyo. Great run for Rosebeath High School, but congratulations to Arroyo High School, good nights, being CIF champions, and also congratulations to Oscar Lopez, the head coach. I know he works really hard with those students and pours his whole heart and time into this program. Very well deserved, and congratulations to those students for their hard work and for playing at APU, my alma mater. Big shout out to Angie Flores also from the HVACs. I don't want to forget her and her A-team, and for Tim Hanson to, for preparing our students to pass that math test. So a lot of positive stuff going on in our school district, gives me great pride, but I especially want to thank Dr. Zuniga for advocacy. We do want to grow our Career Tech Education program, and yes, credentialing with the CTE, with the California Commission on Teacher Credentialing, you know, we got to find flexibility because we have so many professionals in our district who have the skills and can teach CTE, but because of some of the stupidity and some of those rules that the commission has, people don't, the teachers don't want to go back and say, I'm not going to go back and pay for another credential, and, you know, I'm already tired in my day job, and then you're putting all these barriers. So I really hope that our legislators put some pressure to get some of that change so that we can continue that collaboration, communication, critical thinking and creativity. Thank you for your advocacy. I do appreciate it, Dr. Zuniga, and for staying, I will wrap it up, and for staying and keeping, for us having a voice at the table. We cannot forget that, yes, chronic absenteeism, which is not part of the dashboard for high schools, which I think that's a joke, it needs to be, and yes, we need, we need, we need a better systematic approach to address the issue of chronic absenteeism and the correlation that it has with mental health. So thank you for keeping all that in the light and talking about that. That is it, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Moving on to trustee Dr. Galvez.
Good evening, everyone. I kind of went to all the same things everyone else has talked about, but I'm going to run through it one more time. So I was able to attend the event at Fernando R. Ladesma, which was our day with the trades. I thought this was an amazing event. So many trades were present. I was able to walk around, speak with partners. Our mayor was present as well. She came out to support, so thank you to Mayor Ancona for coming out to support our event. That was really nice to see. A lot of our administration was there. It just feels like the community really comes together to attend things, and that's really nice to see so many different people. There were directors, assistant superintendents, superintendents, really, everybody comes together to support our events, and I think that's important, and I think that that really represents like what this district is about, and I love that. I also was able to attend the South Almonte Rosemead game with my dad. He is a teacher at South, so we went and we were cheering both teams, of course, but I was hoping South Almonte would kind of do pretty good there, but they didn't, and so Rosemead won. And then the following week, I went with my entire family to the Rosemead-A-Royal game. My sister went, my brother-in-law went. It was really neat to kind of be there with my family. I also got to sit with Ms. Torres, Dr. Zuniga and President Breones for a little while, and then after that, I switched over to the Royale side because I am a Royale alum, so pardon, they gave me a really hard time. They handed me some Rosemead bracelets, a Rosemead pom-pom. That was really hard for me, but I'm really glad that, to see all of our teams advancing and being successful. I think sports are a really big part of what happens in our schools, and that kind of motivates students, especially students who aren't like, academics isn't their prime focus. Sometimes it's those sports, that involvement in sports that helps get them motivated in that academic piece. So it was so great to see how successful all that was. I did miss the girls' game, but I caught like a few minutes of it at the end. Another event that I attended was trustee, Councilwoman Area One, Councilwoman Sheila Crippen. She was able to host an event, I think it was last week, yeah, last Thursday. And Ms. Heredia was there. So it was really nice to see a lot of people from the community at that event. I live in that area, so I wanted to make sure that us as a board is getting out there to kind of represent like our school district and support the council. A few of our other board members attended as well and it was nice to make that connection. The Public Works was there, the Police Department was there, the Fire Department was there. So we were able to kind of greet, say hi and just say, here we are as Almonte Union High School District, showing support for our city. So that was really nice as well. I think that's kind of everything and that's probably the longest I've ever spoken, so I'm done.
Thank you, Dr. Gueves. Moving on to trustee, Dr. Guzman.
Yeah, so I'll make it brief this time around. So I did get an opportunity to also attend the community meeting for District One, which is also part of my area, trustee area, hosted by Councilwoman Sheila Crippen. And it was really nice to get to talk to people about issues that impact their lives, but that relate to city issues, to school district issues, to high school, the high school as well. And so it was nice to talk to residents about issues that are going to require us to really collaborate across, you know, systems and organizations. And I got to meet some of the parents from Arroyo High School that are really involved in, in city efforts. And so it was really nice to connect, for me to connect with some of them to see how we can leverage some of what the city's doing with some of what the, the high school is doing. We already do some of that, but it was really nice to hear from the residents in terms of what we can do to leverage resources and leverage efforts. And then the other, only other announcement that I have is this coming week, we're going to be starting, the Almonte Police Department is going to be starting their Torch Program, which they've been doing for quite a bit. And this is the first year that we're looking at incorporating mental health into that and some trauma-related education and trauma-informed care. And so that's something that I'll be having more details as I'll be showing up to their first, first session or first meeting that they're going to have with, with their incoming youth. A lot of the students are from our neighboring districts and including the Almonte Union High School District. So, you know, I'll have more next time, but it'll be really exciting to know that again, the cross-collaboration between the city, the Almonte Police Department, the high school district and just other entities to support our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Guzman. I only have a few items because I think everybody else has touched on most of the events that I attended, including the athletic games between South Almonte and Rosemead and then Rosemead High School Girls Basketball versus Gaberlino. They put in a lot of effort. Unfortunately, Gaberlino ended up victorious there. We'll have to say congratulations to Arroyo High School, CIF Southern Section Division 5A Champs. It was a really great game against Rosemead. Really difficult to sit there and not cheer for either side because they were both of our schools. At least when it was Rosemead versus Gaberlino, it was easy to cheer there. Ultimately, Arroyo was, was victorious, so congratulations to them. And I look forward to recognizing those student athletes at a future board meeting. I did have, did have the opportunity to attend the day with the trades at Fernando Ledesma High School. As folks have already mentioned, I think it was a wonderful event and I look forward to that day continuing to grow, perhaps even incorporating it into our College Night because I think there's a lot of overlap in opportunities for students there as opposed to just having a distinct, separate event. Not that it's a bad thing, but I think we would also get a lot more interest in that, in that part from students. I had the opportunity on the February 24th to attend the Los Angeles County School Trustees' Association meeting at Paramount Unified School District. We received a presentation on the new math framework and how to implement it, best practices for multilingual learners. We had presentations from a couple of organizations that really emphasized ensuring that we have community input for not only faculty, but also from parents and students for the new math framework that's, that we will be adopting shortly. I also attended this past Saturday, the South Almonte High School Girls Soccer versus Temecula Prep Finals Game. Unfortunately, Temecula Prep ended up victorious over our Eagles, but the Eagles gave it their all and it was just a really great game. Thank you to the, to Dr. Morales for the invitation. Thank you, Dr. Zuniga, for attending as well. I was sharing with them that I, I'm not a big fan of soccer games, not because I don't find them enjoyable, but because they are extremely stress-inducing for me. There's so much anxiety that in basketball games. So these, this last, these last two weeks have been really anxious for me because there's, there's nothing like a baseball game that's very relaxed. But nevertheless, I was there to support our students and, you know, it was, it was a really great game and, you know, congratulations to Temecula. Unfortunately, they were victorious. And then the last two items, yesterday I was able to attend the South Almonte High School PTSA meeting. I want to say thank you to the parents there who are really just putting in so much effort for the students at South Almonte High School. I watched their presentation, but also the presentation from staff and some other parents who are requesting funding for supplemental items and material. And it wasn't a little bit of money that they were asking for. At one point, one, one individual asked for $12,000 for college support for students. And I think ultimately the, the committee authorized, I think, 10 out of the 12,000 and that was just one item. So I can't imagine how much money that they raised and never mind the, the scholarships that they provide every year. So it's a really active group there and I did share with them how extremely proud I was that, that they're there doing all that hard work for our students and commended them for their efforts. And then the last item I did want to share out is yesterday I had the opportunity to return to New Temple Elementary School for Read Across America Week. This is now the fourth or fifth year that I attend New Temple. So I want to say a special thank you to Principal Ryan Bondi for the invitation as well as for the secretary, Mrs. Arrivas, for organizing the event. And really a special thank you to the teachers that allowed me to be in their classrooms with their students, to Mrs. Quoc, Mrs. Ponse, Mrs. Garibai, Mrs. Endo and Mrs. Shea. I had five classrooms this year. Years past, I think I've done three rooms, maybe four. This year I had five and the, let me tell you, the kids there, they are engaged, they are inquisitive. I had two kindergarten classrooms and those kids there, like, I think I spent the most time in those rooms because they had the most questions. And sometimes you wonder like, where do they come up with these questions? Because this isn't something that I would have thought of myself and I'm 42 years old and here is a five, six-year-old who's asking me these questions. Nevertheless, it was a wonderful day. I look forward to continuing into the future as long as they'll have me there. Wonderful event, well organized and just all in all, it's been a great week. That is all that I have to report tonight. Thank you to my colleagues for sharing what they've done over the last couple of weeks and I look forward to our next meeting when we report out on what else we've done. Excuse me, I just turned off my mic. We'll move on to information presentations. Item number one, a presentation on the Almonte Union High School District State of Technology. Dr. Zuniga.
Yes, thank you, Board President Breones. It's my pleasure to welcome two individuals, part of our team here. I will introduce the first one and he'll make his formal introduction to his colleague, Eric Steelman, as you, there's no secret who he is here. He's been very supportive of even part of our board meetings, right, in supporting technology. But this will take the board into an insight about where we are as far as the state of technology as the Chief Technology and Information Services or Officer within his responsibility to oversee various things that are happening. You may think that he has a specific job, but he's really in the middle of a lot of business services, educational services components, even in human resources components because it requires, for example, software and construction, for example. Another thing that we would not think that, you know, this, our CTIO would, would actually be part of that, but it plays a crucial role. And I want to just, number one, just first of all, thank him for preparing for this evening, but also for his ongoing commitment to our schools, our educators and our students and doing the best he can to move our, to advance our school and our actually programs with regards to technology. So I'll hand it over to Mr. Steelman at this moment and then we can go from there.
Thanks for the kind words. Dr. Zuniga is the best hype man there is. Good evening, Board. It's a pleasure and honor to have the opportunity to, to meet with you tonight, to annually have this opportunity to cover technological initiatives, past, present and future. And it's extra exciting tonight to cover some significant updates in regards to artificial intelligence that we've promised the Board late last year. I'm joined today by Nicole Wessel, who's one of my favorite educators from South Almonte High Schools, really fantastic instructional coach and teacher technology leader. I'll let her introduce herself more.
Hi. So, yeah, I've been teacher technology leader since COVID, actually. I became right in the spring of 2020, so I, I sprung right in. And the reason I'm here tonight, I'm going to be doing an AI portion. I am currently in a doctoral program at Cal Poly Pomona where my dissertation topic, is on AI and education. And in that path, I kind of focused on policy and then I transferred to teacher confidence and competence around generative AI. And now I'm on, really focused on my research questions, which are going to be dealing with how we can use talks of algorithmic bias in generative AI to discuss systemic racism and societal bias with educators.
Go ahead and get started. I wanted to take the opportunity, since we do have two new board members, to at least talk about some of the major flagship initiatives in and around technology within the Almonte Union. Access for All is our learning initiative where we provide every, every student a device. It has grown over the years and we'll talk a little bit about what, everything that that particular program offers. We've made a significant amount of infrastructure upgrades over the last five years, investing well over $3 million, which we're excited about just finishing up some major work where we revamped the entire district, both in and outside of the classroom. Significant work being done in regards to classroom modernization. As Dr. Zuniga said, I work hand in hand with Mr. Barrera and Ms. Macias as well as Dr. Lynn in and around those, those initiatives. Tons of work going on in campus safety. Once again, if you heard me last year, if you would have, you would have said when I started my career 25 years ago, that over 50% of my job these days seems to be in and around campus safety. So we'll talk a little bit about the physical campus and then we'll talk about the cyber side and we'll go into our incident that occurred last year and, and the improvements that we've made off of that. Briefly cover the future technological projects and one of those projects will include the Board. So I don't know if they've been briefed on that, but they'll find out a little bit about that tonight. And then we'll get into AI, which I know is the bread and butter of, of, of tonight. So in and around our Access for All Learning Initiative, we are actually entering year seven of this particular initiative. So we started the year that COVID hit. And once again, I'm always reminded that sometimes, you know, perfect planning and sometimes a little bit of dumb luck, that we were much better off in that particular sense than most of the LEAs around us. So as part of that program, we give all of our incoming freshmen brand new Chromebooks. They are theirs to take through them throughout their four, four years as they matriculate. Those Chromebooks are geared, they're top of the line, they have protective cases and they're assigned for that student that entire four years. One, one program, or one unique aspect of our program is that those devices go with the students as they graduate. It's part of the, the policy and the procedure that we've created for that, for that program. It is unique to us and because of that, we have some of the lowest breakage, breakage rate in and around San Gabriel Valley. So typically around seven to eight percent on an annual basis. We usually buy 10% of what our enrollment is incoming and then 2% goes out for about loners as those devices are getting fixed so that students never go without. Also complementing that program is the Project 10 Million Grant. So any student that has a need for internet services at home where, where it is not provided by the home, then more or less they can make a request. We give them a student MiFi device. And their only requirement for that program is that they just have to utilize the device itself. And so we analyze that data on a quarterly basis. One thing we're really excited about this year, unfortunately, new tariffs are going to affect. It's affecting the country, affecting a lot of different countries in that particular aspect. But in regards to technology, tariffs, we expect anywhere from 10 to 30% increases on a lot of the technology that's coming in, unfortunately, from China and or Taiwan. So as soon as we found out that our devices that we were buying this year were going to be affected by that, we sprung into action. Purchasing did a fantastic job in doing our request for proposal. And we were able to avoid literally within two hours of getting hit with the same exact equipment from one day to the next. So over $85,000 minimum that we saved by just doing that work. And so kudos to purchasing, kudos to the just district directors, because it's really hard to get a PO created and routed all in, all in one day, especially one of this, of this level. Infrastructure upgrades, once again, you may or may not be aware that we have over 10,000 devices on our network on a weekly basis. And so it's really important that we have, because we have the learning initiative that we have, that we have to have really strong network infrastructure. So once again, we have replaced every single one of our wireless access points on all of our classrooms this year and we just finished two weeks ago doing all of the externals. So ubiquity, making sure that wherever our students go, if it's, it's a learning space on campus, that they're going to have a strong, resilient connection. And we've been receiving nothing but accolades, nothing but, but kudos in that particular space. There's a lot of infrastructure that we did back in 2017, 2018 that just, it was very outdated and when you try to, you know, bring in a one-to-one initiative, you're going to have issues when you have that many devices. Once again, it's not about the number of devices or the number of students that you have in a classroom. You have to expect anywhere from four to five connections per student. Smartphones, smart watches, smart shoes even these days. So there's, there's a lot of connections that are happening on our network. So really excited about that work. And now the classrooms can have over 200 simultaneous connections happening at any one time. So more than enough capacity. Lots of modernization improvements in regards to audio/video. So we've completely revamped all of the audio/video connections in every single one of our classrooms, especially those that have gone through modernization, specifically South Almonte and Mountain View. True 21st century classroom concepts of no front of the room, no back of the room, mobility and then casting capabilities for the teacher. So regardless if they're at their desktop or if they're at their, their smart device, they can walk around, they're not tethered basically to the wall. They can cast, they can, students can cast their work onto the devices. So we have flat panels, interactive flat panels, laser projectors. So we did away with all the bulbs so that staff doesn't have to worry about any one point having to replace bulbs and stopping instructions. So we're very sensitive about that. And on top of that, we added voice amplification over the years, especially during COVID. So lots of considerations going on in our classroom. Our teachers, once again, have nothing but the latest and greatest. We implemented a five-year teacher refresh cycle for desktops. So that's all being done by departments. So those departments are getting those this year. And so we'll have this continuous refresh cycle for the years to come, which really helps us on the cybersecurity front as well.
Mr. Steelman, I do have a question. I had the opportunity to visit a site a couple of weeks ago and in visiting some of the modernized rooms, there were a couple of classrooms where teachers indicated that there was an issue with the, with installing the interactive projectors because of the way the, the sliding walls were set up. Do you have any, any info on that?
Yeah, this is, this is one of those where, and I'm assuming that was at South Almonte High School, right?
I won't say where.
Okay. Yeah. So this is where the architects and, and/or the principal really wanted to have the interactive capability on the projector. It's specifically at South Almonte right now and we're looking to expand it out. However, when they did the design, they wanted to basically hide the learning wall. So they have collapsible walls. By having the crease down the middle, it messes up the touch points of the interactivity. And so it's very precise outside of that, but right in the center, which unfortunately is like the perfect center sometimes of, of what's going on. It does play with that. So unfortunate, it's, it's a lesson learned that that was the very first site that we tried that, but we've done everything that we can. That doesn't mean we can't still continuously make tweaks off of it, but it is, it is slightly an issue right now, yeah.
Is there perhaps a workaround that could be implemented?
I'll certainly look into it, sir. Thank you for bringing it to the attention and I wasn't aware that it was that significant of an issue, but I know that it is an issue. So, but we'll take a look at it for sure.
Thank you.
Particular classrooms? Okay. All right. And we got somebody that can help with that. So help identify at least the rooms that it's happening in.
Thank you.
And Mr. Steelman, I had a question regarding the five-year refresh cycle. And just going back to the replacement, the 10, I think you quoted 10, 20% of every year for devices being replaced, right?
Yeah.
Given the large amount of now devices that we're using and going through every, every year.
Yeah.
What's the, is there a plan in place in terms of the reducing the environmental impact of so many devices? I mean, because it's, you know, don't get me wrong, I'm really proud and really glad that we are, like you said, there's cyber security concerns with older devices and a lot of other less features, right, that are needed for 21st century classroom use. But again, the other, the flip side is. But again, the other, the flip side is there's a little bit of heavier cost in terms of environmental impact. Is that something that has been looked at into ways to reduce that environmental impact? Just because of the amount of devices we're going to be going through? And I imagine it's only going to increase as the cycle's probably decreased.
Certainly isn't something unique to Almani Union. I really appreciate your point. I mean, obviously, for a district that prides itself on its green initiatives. I mean, it really comes down to, we want the students and we want the staff to have the latest and greatest available to them in regards to technology. So there is primary desktops that have been set up in the classroom so that if we have substitute teachers, that basically every classroom is set up with the same technology considerations in place. And on top of that, we don't want our teachers tethered to a desk. And so we want them to have those mobile devices and of course, they're in and out of the classrooms. Some of them are even sharing classrooms and so they need to have that other device. I do know that everything is recycled when we do have e-waste campaigns. So I know that at least on that side, that it is being recycled responsibly. But outside of that, I don't know. But I'd be happy to look into those programs, especially if you're aware of something that maybe I'm not. So thank you for bringing that point.
Thank you.
In regards to campus safety, Almani Union is really kind of leading the way in this particular space when I talk to my colleagues in the same position in San Gabriel Valley. We have over 450 cameras. We're in the process of swapping out the cameras to a newer platform, latest and greatest, high definition, facial recognition, a lot of AI features. And I think I've showed that up, showed that off at a prior board meeting. Super excited about that capability where literally those pictures that you're seeing up in the upper right is Fernando La Desmond that was just done a couple of weeks ago. Just absolute fantastic program and everything else, all the other bullets all play into the same platform, which is super helpful for us. The vape sensors, we finished that particular project, so all of our bathrooms now have that vape consideration. Super important for high schools and I know a lot of the other neighboring districts are going through that. That's those same implementations right now. We were highlighted for efforts with Channel 2 and Channel 9. And I even got word from the superintendent at Bassett that he used our, not Bassett, I'm sorry, at Roland, that they used our video to basically help sell the vape services to the board as well. So we are seeing reductions in the numbers, 20 to 30%, at least across the district. And of course, the sites that are doing a better job, not a better job, but are being a little bit more stringent on what bathrooms are open and/or where the campus supervisors are stationed, you're seeing those numbers dwindle even more. So I know all the school sites are making great strides in that effort and then hopefully that's something that the hardware will help them in that particular case. So Dr. Galvez?
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Do these make noise or are they just emailing like the site?
They have the capability of doing both, but what we've done is we've equipped our campus supervisors with an iPad, so they actually get alert notifications on their iPads. Yeah. So it's got a lot of great features from a workflow standpoint. You can have alerts, you can have emails, you can have text messages. You can make it as intrusive as you want or as least intrusive. So the other thing that we just also added is that in each one of the main offices, there's going to be basically the cameras. If you've come into any one of the campuses, you've seen that in the past. There's a newer system that actually not only shows us where there's live action, it also shows us where there's live alerts happening. So once again, it's another facet to put that information more in their face as opposed to them having to go look for that information. So.
I have a couple of questions regarding the cameras.
Yeah.
Do you know what the offhand, what the false positive rate, false positive rate is for the facial recognition? And I know that's something that you're talking about AI and bias and all that stuff. And so that's one. And then the other one is around storage and ensuring that locally stored, all this stuff, right? Because we don't want, you know, this kind of technology and information, facial recognition to be, right? So the first question of.
So the first question is, it is a cloud-based system. Almost all these systems are what they refer to as software as a service these days. And so, but our data is our data. It doesn't, ultimately, it still resides on their servers, but it isn't being used. It isn't being transmitted by anything. There's an agreement for data privacy and so forth that they have to sign with us. So for that aspect, I think we're okay. In regards to the AI and facial recognition piece, it is 100% spot on. And in fact, the way the system works is you could upload a picture and say, this is a person of interest. And it'll literally show you all the footage over a 30-day span, every single place where that person has been on our campus. So it really helps us out when we're trying to do investigations, to be able to isolate down exactly where that person was, what buildings they were in, what they were wearing. It's pretty phenomenal. So from a safety standpoint, it's exactly what you would want. But I'm not sure if you're looking at that lens or any other lens. Okay, great. Fantastic. In regards to guest management, this is something that you've seen out of all the school sites. We do have a picture there. Almani High School was the only school site that didn't have it, just because there was no front of the campus. So we added in additional wireless capability and we also worked with facilities to add in electrical outlets so that we could actually have that station out there. And so that's been out there for the last month and a half and it's been working out great for them. Access control is also the digital door lock system. So we've got multiple school sites where that's being implemented. It's finally being finalized for South Almani over the next 30 days. It's been a point of contention because portions of it were done, but not the other portions. And so teachers have been struggling a little bit, but we've got a plan in place. Once again, this is another one of those where the architect saw it slightly different than what we did and we had a little bit of a learning curve being the first campus that actually went through with it. Once again, the biggest piece to this system is that everything is in a single pane of glass. So all of these things that we're talking about, we can see it in one system, which is super helpful for us to have that at the fingertips of our plant managers, our campus supervisors, who are responsible for monitoring a lot of that, a lot of aspects of that. In regards to cybersecurity, when I presented this information to the board last year, the seven bullets that you see there are basically the minimum requirements that you must have in order for a district to be insured from a cyber insurance liability standard. And we had compliance in six out of the seven. There was one area where I had marked it in yellow where we'd like to make improvements on. Unfortunately, our time came last year, July 4th. As most of the board is aware, we were hit with a ransomware attack, which we've been very open, honest and transparent about. We've also been sharing a lot of our story to all the other LEAs in San Gabriel and Los Angeles County. Because knowledge is power and we want to make not only our district a much harder target in the future, but we want to help other institutions to help education across Los Angeles and/or the state. So we've made dramatic improvements on all of these particular areas, including including number five, which is endpoint protection. So we've added that particular consideration and we've now got compliance in all of these areas. And so I just want to reassure the board that we've made ourselves a much harder target. We took every opportunity to harden each and every one of these areas. We worked with Homeland Security, we worked with the FBI, we worked with our cyber insurance provider team. And now I think we're now kind of an annoyance to some of the staff in the sense that, I mean, I think Mr. Pedia, when he came in today, he said, you know, I don't like multi-factor, but I know how much it helps. And so I appreciate that. I appreciate that comment, sir. So thank you for all your help in this particular space. I know we're in a much better position having gone through it. And at the end of the day, I'm super proud of the team and how it responded because we didn't lose any instructional time, we didn't lose any data, our network never went down, our systems were not compromised. So very proud of the effort in what we did in that particular space.
I had a quick question regarding, you know, you mentioned the seven key areas that they're all hardened. I'm particularly interested in the professional development piece because as the data out there shows that most of the time that this happens is essentially because we let them in one way or another, right? We click on a link, we open an email, we download something.
Yeah.
And that tends to be the easiest path of getting into, you know, our systems, right? And so I know it has professional development ongoing. Do you think we're at the point where we're doing enough of not only the professional development, but making sure that we're testing to ensure that the staff are not falling for it, that everything is like locked away in that sense? And number two is, you know, you feel really, really confident? Because that's where I'm most worried about, that, you know, that that's where you couldn't have all this security and features and everything, but if we click on the wrong link, we're in trouble either way, right?
And let me first say that there's a reason why professional development is number two and multi-factor is number one. And that's because even if you, even if you feel that you've done a really, really good job from a professional development standpoint with both classified and certificated, you are doing phishing campaigns, like you said, which we want to make some additional improvements on to test against that. Even if they give up their password, they're not giving up the keys of the kingdom because there is multi-factor enabled. So they would have to know some other form and be able to validate some other form of identification to prove that they are who in fact they say they are. So there is always going to be some sort of phishing campaign. We see different strategies that are happening constantly. Even this morning, you know, our payroll got hit with something that we had to shut down. So but once again, multi-factor authentication is the key and that's why it's the number one recommendation from a cyber insurance provider standpoint. So just briefly, what's coming? And I think I heard some comments about this one of the last board meetings. Excited to say that the websites are finally going to be replaced. So our current provider, Blackboard, did get bought out a year and a half ago. So it's been about seven years since we actually did this particular swap. And each time we do it, and this is why, if you feel like, hey, Eric's always talking about the same things, well, it's always continuous improvement process. So each time we have to touch it, we always make it better than what it was prior, right? So we know we're going to make some significant advancements in regards to accessibility and translations, new page designs, and I know the TTLs were really excited to see some of the stuff that was coming. Significant curriculum highlights, but we're just excited about new functionality that's going to be added on top of more consistent, relevant content, which everybody plays a role in contributing to. We are making the recommendation that we go with a company called ParentSquare, which we've been using for our school-to-home communications. So it's a create-once, publish-everywhere concept. So no matter what the modality is, if we create content that we want to send out to our students and/or our parents, we'll have the one platform to send out any and all and/or post to the website at the same time. So it should save a significant amount of time and it's actually a cost savings over what we were looking at for competitors. We did look at five other top choices in content management systems and by far, ParentSquare blew them out of the water. So in addition to that, we are looking to replace some alarm systems at the school sites. It is a very expensive and/or labor-intensive process for our plant managers to have to arm and disarm buildings, so we're looking to make some improvements there. We're looking at some of the other districts that are doing panic buttons. Teachers that are wearing items over, you know, around their neck and more or less being able to do calls of, hey, I need assistance and/or trigger a lockdown. We have an emergency management system and so we're looking to see if that, a proof of concept for one of our school sites to see if that would be something that we'd like to pursue in the future. And then the last one is one I warned you about where the system that we use for all of our board approvals, board docs, unfortunately, is yet another victim. It's going away and it's going to be replaced at the end of the year diligently. Ms. Sanchez, the name of the program, do you remember? Yeah. I can't remember. Community? All right. So you'll be part of the community at the end of the year. That's the calendar year of when they're going to be transitioning us over.
Is it still a diligent product?
It is, yeah. They're just switching us over to the latest and greatest. You should see significant improvements in that, so it is something that we've been welcoming. We definitely will welcome for quite some time. Okay, so for the heart of what we're here to talk about tonight is in regards to artificial intelligence. So we're happy that we've made some significant improvements in regards to policy. It all starts with policy and then we can start working on significant professional development in and around that policy. So the board is aware that the majority of our policy updates typically come from CSBA, California School Boards Association. When you look up artificial intelligence and CSBA's policy manager, you get about 22 board policies, administrative regulations and exhibits that have been changed in the last nine months. It gets its hands in a lot of different areas. So I just wanted to let the board know that the first iteration of this on the most important pieces is the board policy for student use of technology and employee use of technology. And so those are on the board tonight in a first draft reading. We've taken the opportunity to update a lot of the language that was in there as well as to create the addendum in our acceptable use policy specifically on artificial intelligence. So the timing of this is perfect because typically, students and parents will review this information during the registration packets. So that goes live for our students in April. So if we start making these changes now, by the end of the year, that's already in place and they're already having the opportunity to review that information before the new students come in. It was really important for us that when we were creating this policy, that we make it as brief and concise, permissive in design. But we're covering all of the major areas that any policy would have. And that's, yeah, we want to encourage the use of it, but we also want to encourage the safe and ethical use. We want to address academic integrity and transparency. Student data privacy is a significant piece of this. As they're utilizing tools and they're putting in their personally identifiable information, it's a lot of information. We don't know who owns that particular data and so there are some cautions in and around that. So what you're seeing linked is the actual link to the AUP, acceptable use policy, and then the addendum to the AI portion at the end of that. Nicole's going to go on with the professional development side.
All right, the exciting part. So as I was saying, kind of my background with AI, I've also been working the last two years, teaching teachers about AI, how they can utilize it as well as using it with students in various ways. And I've collaborated recently with Almani City. Jessica there found out what I was doing through some people here and asked me to come and do some trainings for their teachers because Almani City had decided with their January PD, they wanted to focus on teaching their teachers about AI. So this was mandatory training for all of them. It was supposed to be three days, but unfortunately, because of the fires, it was two days worth of workshops. But I spoke to many of the teachers there about using AI, actually with their students, in a secure format. And some other teachers were presenting on AI use for lesson planning and stuff like that. I've also done trainings with our district. We do something every year called Launch. If you're not familiar with it, it's a one week right before teachers officially come back on contract. And it's a voluntary PD, three to four days, and they kind of choose workshops that they go to. So I've been teaching them about AI in various forms in the last two years. So one thing that I do at these trainings is I poll teachers because I want to get some data. Now, this is not, this is, we're going to just call it, although it is numbered data, it's qualitative data because I haven't done all the statistics on it to, you know, to assure that these are results that we can say, yes, this is it. So which of these AI tools have you used? As you can see, overwhelmingly, not as a surprise, ChatGPT, people know it, right? That's the one that people know. There are hundreds of AI tools out there and some people aren't even aware that they're AI tools. But you can see, you know, we have some that have used Magic School and School AI. These are educator platforms that utilize generative AI with specific tools. So we have a little bit of use there, some on Gemini, that's Google's large language model. But we don't have a lot of knowledge out there outside of ChatGPT. And we even have three educators out of that 45 who have never used any generative AI. And this is a poll just from that January training. These are similar findings to what I saw with our teachers at Almani Union High School District as well. The second thing that I asked them about is, on a scale of one to five, how comfortable do you feel using AI with students? This number went a little bit more to the right over the last six months and especially the last year and a half. Don't have as many as not at all, but a lot of hesitancy still at using AI. So if they're uncomfortable using AI, they're probably also uncomfortable even talking about it with students. And then finally, what do they say? What do they think? I'd ask them, put in three words that you think of when, you know, you think of generative AI. And see, helpful is a big one that comes up there, useful, innovative, but it's also scary, it's overwhelming. And so these are the feelings that many teachers have around generative AI. So something that I started at South Almani this year, I polled teachers in the, right at the end of fall to see what interest they'd have in learning about generative AI. So I have two different things that are happening this spring. One is an AI discussion group. So this is simply, let's get together, semi-structured, let's talk about generative AI in education. What's going on in your classroom? What are you scared about? What can we do moving forward? And then I have formal workshops, so I'm specifically looking at different AI tools and teaching them about them. And the first one that I did on February 6th, this is completely voluntary. Teachers are coming in on their prep period. I had 11 attend. Doesn't seem like a lot, but when you look at what teachers are willing to do. I had eleven attend. Doesn't seem like a lot, but when you look at what teachers are willing to do on their prep period. Eleven is a pretty good number to come in. They want to know about this stuff. So this was the poll. I have sixty people that, um, at South Almani that have answered this poll so far. As far as what they're interested in learning about with A I. The first four numbers, the blue, red, yellow, green, right there are very specific things like, I, I want to know about lesson planning. I want to know about. Uh, using A I with my students. You can choose multiple things, but let's, let's look at the orange, forty of the, of the sixty people that answered this. Are interested in anything I can learn about A I tools. The purple is, I am not interested. Because I did ask people, hey, even if you don't want to do this, I need to know the numbers of where we're at, right? So twelve people. Don't want to know about it. They don't want to learn anything. Maybe they're learning on their own. Maybe there are some of those hesitant, scared people like, I don't even want to acknowledge that it exists. But we do have a large interest in learning about these tools. I also asked, uh, about the collaborative meeting. So. Uh, the yes is, yes, I want to attend every month. The maybes are, hey, give me an invite every month. I'll, I'll go depending, but. Only four, fourteen out of the sixty that don't want to be at some point part of this collaboration. So again, a lot of interest around generative A I with teachers. So, um, recommendations, and these are my recommendations, talking to different people and kind of finding out what's out there. And what the interest is. South Almani did put in a request. I don't think it's quite to the board yet, but you'll be seeing that soon. To pilot, uh, School A I. So as I mentioned before, there's School A I, there's Magic School, there's some other ones out there. Magic School is kind of the most known. But this is a specific platform designed for educators that utilizes. Um, A P I's from large language models. So they're kind of, they're using Chat B T, Jep, Chat P T T, uh, sorry, Chat G P T. And others, but they have designed their own agents and their own tools to specifically do certain things. So it's a much more user-friendly platform for educators. And with School A I and Magic School, we have additional security and safety because, um, I know School A I has signed all of their. Security and privacy, same as the C O P A, the F R P A, all that. So they are fully compliant. Uh, Magic School, I'm not sure where they're at. Again, with my collaboration with Jessica at, um, Almani City. Back in January, when we talked, Magic School hadn't signed all of those yet. They may have at this point, but, um, Almani City actually. Last I talked to Jessica is also looking at School A I, and so that's why I'm interested in that one, just so that we have articulation. We have. Um, similarity in what the students are using and, uh, looking at as they come up through. Um, their district to ours. Other resources, um, not a comprehensive list of things that I've used. But Gemini, Brisk, Chat G P T, we have the Adobe Suite, uh, Adobe Firefly is a text to image generator. Lots of fun with students and they have a blast and actually work on their language skills in prompting to get these, uh. The images up. So it's a lot of fun. Um, but I recommend getting, getting something, some kind of program that we can use. Getting some, uh, Gen I A, Gen A I champions in our teachers to get them trained to train others. You saw that there's lots of interest. So I think that we can develop those skills. Across all courses and subjects, so we can have some champions in math. We can have champions. Who specifically work with our special education kids so that we can get that expertise on how this works with different students and in different courses. And aligning our A I P D and our P L Cs with our district-wide vision. Creating co-creation, not just with our teachers, but let's talk to our students, let's talk to our parents, let's talk to staff about this. This is a big thing that's coming out and we need to have these discussions. That's the most important thing because. None of us are an expert on everything. There's really not an expert on generative A I right now because it's so new and it's. Just expanding so fast. Um, the A I focal points for educators, that's something that Eric had put together. Did you want to show that? Okay. Yeah. So it's a list of things that we could do as far as P D and development, just some ideas. The resources that I have up there are collaborations that we could have outside of our district. Um, and, uh, specifically like Q A I Leadership Academy. I'm right now in the first cohort of that academy. They just started the second one. This is for leaders in districts. Um, I'm actually one of, I think, just two. Like educator instructional coach, everybody else is. There's board members, there's district admin, there's site admin. That are on, in these academies to really learn about what A I is and what it means for education. Of course, Laco has departments to help us and, um, get people to come out and train and work with us. To create these P L Cs and talk about A I. Uh, district partnerships like with Almani City. A Digital Promises has some resources as far as curriculum around A I literacy as well. More questions?
Uh, any questions for Nicole before we move on? I mean, uh, obviously we're laying the groundwork of significant professional development work that is. Going to be done and replicated across all sites. When we, uh, came with the A, uh, A I resolution, we said. We're going to ask for a proof of concept. We're going to be doing a needs assessment. Um, and so we're laying the foundational groundwork and it, and it's nice to see the articulation that's already in place, uh, between Almonte City, specifically Jessica and Nicole. Um, but as an instructional coach, all of the content creation, all of the surveys that she's doing is being shared. Uh, amongst the other instructional coaches and so organically, um, great things are happening in and around that area. So, um, there's also. The evolution of A I is just happening at such a rapid rate. Um, and so sometimes there is a little bit of benefits of coming to the. I'm getting there a little bit later, but, uh, but unfortunately we, you know, we can't kick the can any longer. So I, I'm just really happy for efforts. And we just need to replicate that across the district. So, uh, in conclusion, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to have, uh, have this opportunity to present this information to you. Um, and, uh, just thank you for your support over the years on all of these initiatives because without you guys, I literally, we, we couldn't do it. So. Thank you. Uh, any other additional questions?
Thank you, Mr. Steelman, Miss, uh, excuse me, Ms. Wessel, Mrs. Wessel. Miss, uh, for your presentation tonight. At this time, I will open up the discussion to the board. Any questions or comments, Mr. Nguyen?
No, thank you very much for your very comprehensive presentation.
Thank you. Dr. Galavies?
Great presentation, and I just love how ahead of everything we are. I feel like some districts are just barely starting to talk about these things. And we have full-blown plans, so I just really appreciate the work that we're doing and, uh, keep up the good work.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Padilla?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank Mr. Steelman. Um, and yes, I did thank you for that, you know, two-step authentication because. I have been, uh, I, I have been a person who's been hacked where I remember they had said I had sent like a. Letter to Mr. Breonis, and then we were trying to figure out what that was. And then. Recently I heard another board member had the same thing, like a communication like that. So. Thank you for, uh, for your leadership in this area. I know that when we stole you from, uh, a neighboring union school district. Uh, that's the reason that we stole you because we, we knew how, how strong you were in, in being the director of technology and. You have taken us to another level and, uh, our kids have had, got to benefit from so many of the, the great programs that were out there. Particularly the, uh, the one-to-one initiative and making sure that, uh, all of our students had technology in their hands. I remember originally we were like, oh no, because they're going to go on YouTube and they're going to spend all their time on there. And. I mean, we, we had it all out and we had this discussion and the benefits, you know, outweighed. Uh, you know, the glass was half-full and giving our parents and our kids that. Confidence that we believe you're, that you're going to do the right things with this device. And you kind of confirm that today that we have one of the lowest breakage rates and that's because the kids know this is for you. And, uh, I know that also Dr. Zuniga can attest to this, that a lot of times we have our. College students that continue to use these devices even after they leave us. Because, you know, we, we are in a district that has such a high percentage of students on, on free and reduced lunch and sometimes, you know, we're so, um. We want to help our students so much, sometimes they come back and then they would like for you, if you could troubleshoot and fix their, their. Their laptop because they still need it. And, uh, I know you've done that on multiple occasions to so many of our students that have gone off to college and come back during. Uh, their downtime. So thank you. Thank you for your leadership and also to Ms. Nicole Wessel. Uh, thank you so much for being at the, uh, at the sites because that's where it happens and. Uh, there is interest there, there's fear. I'm one of those, but it's kind of like how to work smarter, not harder with using this A I and. Uh, when we go to C S B A, we've heard of how to make your I E Ps more effective and how to, you know, just. Making it better and stuff. And that part, I'm not a technology buff. I actually hate technology. Everybody knows that. But A I is something that really like, yeah, I want to learn more. Um, it, I, I got so intrigued by it. I'm like. What the hell is this deep seek? I even downloaded it, you know, like, and, uh, I wanted to know. And the part that it caught me was that. I, I, in the United States, we've spent so much more money than some of these other countries are spending in theirs. And they're, they're, it sounds like their technology is like superior to Chat G P T in the little thing that I know about technology and what I've heard. But it's, it's, it's piqued my interest and I'm interested in knowing more about A I and. How I can, uh, work smarter, not harder before I retire because it's, it's coming. So thank you to both of you. Appreciate it.
Thank you for that. Yeah, Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla and Dr. Guzman.
Yeah, I just want to commend, um, both you, Mr. Steelman and, uh, Ms. Wessel for the presentation. Um, not just on the A I piece, but the cybersecurity, um, your answer to my questions. It's very, very thought out, very comprehensive. Um, I'm especially excited about the A I piece, right? And the, the fact that. While other schools around the country have been exploring A I. It does sound like we're still being very intentional and really, uh, positioning our students for the future. Um, because I know, um, you know, there's been numbers out there of like fifty percent of high school students are using, you know, A I. Um, and in college it jumps over eighty to ninety percent of students are using, um, A I. And so. The fact is it's here. We need to embrace it. How do we use it to, um. Support our teachers, support our students. And again, everything I saw tonight really showed that it's been very intentional, very, very well thought out. And really I am looking forward to the pilot at South Almonte High School if that's what's going to come first. And again, I, I just can't wait to see it roll out district-wide because, um. This is going to help with, and I saw, I saw the focal points for educators. I went on the list and saw it real, uh, briefly right now and, um. I mean, you're talking about critical thinking skills for students. How do you really look at A I-generated content and make sure that you. Know what, you know, fake information, right? Or things that might not be what they appear, which is A I lends itself to that. So. That critical thinking piece is so key now, um, to really for our students as they engage the world. Um, but also for teachers, reducing that burnout, right? Helping them, um, be more, um. Uh, be able to complete tasks that are, um, roten, monotonous, right? That they're so repetitive that. You know, this is the type of technology they can help them actually focus on. Things that truly matter that only they can do for their students. And so really excited. And again, I want to commend you for just how well thought out this is all has been. And just obviously like I've said before, um, to other presenters, let us know if there, let me know or let us know if there's anything we can do. Um, to support this effort, but I'm really excited about, um, the pilot at South Almonte High School. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Guzman.
Thank you, Dr. Guzman. Uh, just final thoughts. Um, thank you both for being here tonight and presenting. To Eric, thank you for presenting on the infrastructure and everything that allows the second piece to happen. Um, you know, having been around the block a bit myself, uh, seeing the upgrades year after year. Um, that allow for ten thousand devices to be, you know, in use at, at any given time. Um, that's kind of a, an amazing thought because I can think back to the days where. You know, you were lucky if you had a handful of devices, um, on a handful of access points and that was it. Uh, and we thought that was amazing at the time. Yeah, we absolutely did. And you know, and those are some very humble beginnings. Uh, but you know, the, it's the division from your predecessors and yourself and the rest of the staff today that has gotten us to that point. Um, and to, to Nicole, thank you for presenting on the second part, which is what the future is going to bring. Um, I'm very happy to see the pilot coming to South Almonte. I'm even happier to see. That school.ai has, is F R P A compliant. There's some privacy, um, concerns that are addressed there because. As much as I am a techie, I am also very leery of what A I can mean to people and can do. I mean, Mr. Or Dr. Guzman touched upon it about the critical thinking and understanding, you know, perhaps what you're looking at. That is A I-generated may not necessarily be a, uh, an actual artifact that, uh, that, that has any truth to it. In case in point, you can, uh, put in a prompt and sometimes, uh, the, the A I agents can have hallucinations. And, um, generate content that looks real, um, can even give you some real-looking citations that are completely made up. Um, and if somebody, whether it be a student or an educator or somebody else, just takes it at face value. And I've actually seen cases where some folks in the legal profession have gone down this road. And then they get admonished because none of it is real. Um, it looks real, it sounds real and it, but it's not. Um, so it's, it's helping folks understand. This is a tool. But a tool can be used improperly and it can cause damage. It can hurt individuals. Um, so we want to make sure that folks are comfortable using it, but also have that critical thinking, um, component to understand. Uh, what's real, what isn't, and, and how best to use the tool, what are best practices? Uh, and more importantly, how that tool is going to change from today to tomorrow or from this morning to this afternoon. So that's really, that's really key. So thank you both for being here. Much appreciate the presentation. Um, as always, as Dr. Guzman, um, said, please let us know how we can support you. Uh, obviously funding is a big factor and I'm always happy to know that L cap is, is there. Um, and allows us to, to, to decide where to, where best to use our funding. Um, you know, that's one of the things that we've discussed as, as educational leaders throughout the region in California. We don't want to return to the days of categoricals. We want to ensure that we are able to decide and we have professionals that. Are able to tell us, hey, this is what, what we're seeing, this is the interest, this is where we want to go. So it's great hearing from you both. Thank you so much.
And I invite any of you to come to one of my workshops. If you want, just email me and I'll tell you when they are.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, board. Um, moving right along to our annual update to the Local Control and Accountability Plan or L cap. And the Local Control Funding Formula Budget Overview for Parents. Dr. Zuniga?
Yeah, thank you, Board President Breonis. I want to welcome Edith Chiviria again, um, well-known individual here in our district office and great supporter of many various programs ran through L cap. Uh, Mr. Chiviria is here to present again, the, uh, the annual L cap and L C F F budget overview for parents as required. By Education Code and Senate Bill one-one-four. So I'd like to welcome Mr. Chiviria. Good evening, Mr. Chiviria.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. What a great opportunity to be able to present after our update on technology, right? So now we get to sit through me trying to review this a hundred-page document in a few slides. All right. So I do understand, this is the first time that I do present to. Why is this not working? Oh, did you? Yeah, you did. A few, uh, new board members, so it's going to be a little bit more comprehensive than you, what you've probably saw last year. Um, I will go over, just begin with what is the L cap, um, review of our goals that are included in the L cap. Um, go over what the requirements are for, on an annual basis. Part of it is the Budget Overview for Parents, providing you with outcome data, the most recent expenditures and implementation data. And something that just started this year, the Equity Multiplier Goals, and then a timeline of what else is to happen. So what is the Local Control and Accountability Plan? As this is actually has been already more than ten years. I can't believe it. Um, but all, um, districts, county offices, Ed and charger schools are required to write a plan. Um, as a result of Local Control Funding Formula where we are, um. Describing how the goals of all of our students will be met, um, by providing increased and improved services for low-income English learners and foster youth. It's always a three-year cycle and this year is the first year of that three-year cycle. In a nutshell, these are our five goals. There are district goals. There are two additional goals in the plan, but these are the five district goals. Um, first one revolves around conditions for learning. Um, second one is around broad course of study. Then we focus on student achievement, parent and family engagement, and student engagement. So what are the requirements? It's actually part of Ed code that we're supposed to provide an update to the board. It's usually on air before February twenty-eighth. But this year there's actually, um, executive order from the governor that says because of natural disasters, particularly the fires. It was extended to through March thirty-first. So that's why. So, that's why you're hearing it today. Two major components, actually three. One is an update on the Overview for Parents, identifying any fiscal changes from when the budget was presented in June, any outcome data that we have, and then any expenditure data that we have that's related to the plan. So, when we presented or when we adopted the plan on June 26th, it focused on 128 million as part of the Local Control Funding Formula and 39 point, 37.3 million as part of supplemental and concentration. Both of those amounts slightly decreased, but our services haven't changed this year. Oops, wrong one. All right, so again, we're going to focus on the five district goals. And now you get to see 35 different metrics. If you ask me, I'm excited because I have a math background and I love numbers. I know all of you are not as excited, so I won't take as much time as I would love because then you'd probably be sleeping on me. I'll be here for hours. All right, so we're going to go over 31 metrics. All of the metrics are aligned to a goal. So, the first goal has six metrics. What we have to do is, we have to provide where we were when we wrote the plan, what we expect after three years, and where we are now with the latest data. So, I'm not going to go over every item unless you want me to because I believe you got access to this information beforehand. What I did provide you with is specific data on where we're pulling up this data from. So, all of the sources are listed on the bottom. I think that's new, but that's also to help me understand or remind me of where we're pulling the data. Because if you look at Data Quest, it's different than the dashboard sometimes. So, we need to make sure we track where we're pulling the data from. So, when we're looking at this in particular, we, first item, number of teachers misassigned. We went from 14 to eight. All of our teachers continue to be fully credentialed. Our facilities are in good repair. Our teachers are participating in structured PD and we know that because we have three full-day PDS throughout the school year. We're implementing state standards. And you have a glimpse of DNF rates in the core areas. For the most part, they've gone down. There's one content where they slightly went up. Goal two, broad course of study. We have eight metrics. These are the first four. Instructional materials, you've already seen that our kids have access, all of our students have access to instructional materials. When we're looking at A through G completion rates, we're at close to 45%. Pathway completion rate, 11.1, which is a slight increase. And then AP enrollment rate also went up to 29.1. Those are good trends. But in alignment to not just having more kids take AP classes, they're also passing at a higher rate. So, we went from 58.9 to 61.3, which is good because you can have more kids take AP classes, but if they're not passing the AP exam, then it's not as effective. College and Career Coordinator Indicator is new, added to the plan. So, we went, we relatively stayed the same, I guess, from 40.8 students being prepared to 40.5. The LCAP survey, that's the data that's not available because the survey actually just closed on Friday. So, we're still reviewing and compiling the data. So, you won't see that available, but it'll be presented at the end of the school year. And five-year cohort graduation rate, that one is from Data Quest and it went from 87 to 83, about 83%. Student achievement, that's goal three. And understand that a lot of these metrics are not included by choice. The state actually dictates most of what you have to include. So, we have to look at Sback data in English and math. In English, we slightly decreased and math, there is a slight increase. The English Learner Progress Indicator, we actually had a slight increase as well. And the reclassification rate for the, compared to the prior year, it went up by about 4%. So, that's good. Any question? Did you have a question? Because I know I'm going fast. No? Everything is clear, I take it, for now. Awesome. All right. Also, Sback to Identify Early Assessment Program. This is really the percent of kids who exceed standards on the Sback. So, in ELA, we were at 29.3. We stayed relatively the same, 29.2. And in math, there was a slight increase. A through G, students who completed both A through G and a CT pathway went from 5.5 to 5.9%. CAST, the science test, is also the first year that's included in the LCAP. We went from 25.6% to 28.4. And then the summer school passing rate, we stayed relatively the same. Actually, we went up by 1% from 87.8% of kids passing to 88.8%. Goal four, this is all data that's based on the survey that we haven't compiled. But we did add two specific new metrics that target not just how many families participate, but different families. Because we can have 100 parents, but if they're the same parents, what's the growth? So, our goal is really to bring in more families. And the second one is to really target English learners, parents of English learners, and get them engaged as well. And then the metrics for the last goal, which is increasing student engagement, there's five of them. The suspension rate stayed relatively the same, I guess, 3.94. Chronic absenteeism went down. Dropout rates went up a little and expulsion rates stayed at zero. So, before moving on, I have a few questions because I'm ready to quiz. There is no joke. All right, that was the metrics portion, which is all of the data that's included. And with the data comes the actual actions. What are we doing? What are we actually providing with supplemental and concentration funds? So, before I go into the written actions, I figured I would share a few of the pictures that tell the story. So, all of these activities are supported out of supplemental and concentration funds. The first one, College and Career Family Conference. Great turnout on a Saturday for a Saturday morning. Actually, it's a Saturday all day, I think. And we keep getting more and more parents attend. On the right side, you see parent workshops. They take place here, actually in this boardroom, Thursday nights and Saturday mornings. You see about 30 parents coming consistently. We have Almani High School recognizing kids for attendance. We actually have, do you remember that Ms. Shebriones College Night? I think that's College Night, right in the middle, at a Royal this past fall. And then we also recognize Student of the Month at all of our schools with supplemental and concentration funds. So, this is just for you to get a visual of what is taking place because of actions in the LCAP. So, the first goal focuses just on two different actions. You will notice that all of our actions are implementing as planned because when we're looking at when we pulled the data, we pulled it in January. So, we still have 50% of the year to go. And as long as we've expended or projected to expend more than 50%, then we should be implementing as planned. Our second goal was on a broad course of study. So, we provide SAT, free SAT exams for our students, PSAT, AP exams. All of that is covered through here. We actually have the next SAT administration in April. So, you'll notice that it hasn't been fully expended because we're still planning things. We have our annual, oh, that wouldn't be here. We cover AP and CTE classes through LCAP, CTE staff, materials, technology, elective sections. We support AVID, the library, online and personalized learning, and Chromebooks for students. Our third goal is on student achievement. So, how are we, what are we doing to increase and maintain great student achievement? So, we're targeting engagement in classrooms. We're providing ELDI Lab classes, our English Language Development Lab classes. We're providing paraeducators and supplemental instructional materials, along with ELDOSs, counselors. Targeted tutoring during the day, summer school. Summer school, you'll see that it wasn't totally expended because it was paid out of other funds. More paraeducators and then our data analysis platform. For our parent and family engagement, we provide a lot of school-to-home communication, support with community liaisons at the sites and at the district, parent engagement resources, workshops and trainings, and translation and interpretation services. And the last action is probably the biggest or the one that has the most expenditures. It includes all of support services and personnel. When it comes to counselors, nurses, psychologists, wellness coordinators, all of that list, child welfare and attendance coordinators, school resource officers, student affairs, athletic trainers, campus supervision, foster youth support services, stage technicians, resources to support student safety, support for low-income students experiencing homelessness, and additional staff to support clean schools during and after school, which these are custodians. So, those were all of the actions in the five district, in the five district goals. But this year, we had to add, this year was the first year that the state gave us Equity Multiplier Funds. And Equity Multiplier Funds were provided to schools whose prior year non-stability rate was greater than 25% and their socially-economic disadvantage rate was greater than 70%. So, statewide, it usually went to the alternative sites. And the only guidance was provided was they must be used for evidence-based services. So, these two goals that are included in the plan are specific to the two schools. So, the first one is Fernando La Desma. Their goal revolved around engagement and outcomes for English learners, homeless, and Hispanics. The metrics, they had five metrics. Three of them, they, they increased. Two of them, there was a slight decrease. Actions were identified and we are working with the school to ensure that they're providing added opportunities for students to take classes during the day because that's what the data showed or that's what the input provided. Community Day School. Their goal revolved around increasing engagement also and outcomes for students. It was primarily because of the suspension rate. But if you notice, their suspension rate was greatly reduced from one year to the next. And with that school, we've already added additional campus supervision, which was part of what was requested. So, we started, as we continue to implement, implement actions for this current plan, we're already looking at making revisions for next year's plan. And that started since January 7th. The surveys were released. I went to visit all of the schools. When going to each of the schools, I met with students, with parents, with any staff that wanted to come. And I also promoted that they complete the survey so that it's not just formal conversation, but informal information through surveys. The survey closed this Friday. Then after this, we get to look at all the data that was provided, draft the plan. Our goal is to submit it to the county for pre-review because we want to make sure they approve it when we submit it in June and then present it to the Board June 11th and on the 18th for the adoption. But as we're revising or looking at data to move forward, we have to continue implementing what's in the plan today and working with our stakeholders to seek input on what else can be done. And that was it on my behalf. And I will also say thank you for your support with all of the work that's done through SNC to support our families.
Thank you, Edith, for your presentation. At this time, I'll open it up to any questions or comments from the Board. Trustee Nguyen?
Yes. You know, on LCAP Goal Three, you know, for the California Assessment Student Performance and Progress, Smarter Balance Assessment, so this is a three-year plan. So, your baseline is 22 and 23. It ended with 24 and 25, that's three, three-year plan, right? So, the mid-year is, you know, for 2024 to 2025, it very much last year, right? Am I correct or not?
Yes.
Okay. So, the, let's say, you know, let's say for the ELA, the Sback, your baseline is 60.2%, you know, that exceed, met or exceeded standard. And right now, in the mid-year, you have 57.8. So, it's not bad. You know, we're making a good progress right there. But on the math, you know, you, you know, the baseline is 25.2 and the target of 40.2%. And right at mid-year, that'd be almost the end of the school year, 2024, 2025, we only met 28.1%. So, that's quite a big, big gap to, to meet. I'm not playing with you, but just the number. So, there's a lot of things that we, we have to be aware, you know, what's happening. And you know, the ELA is not bad. We're progressing nicely, but the math, you know, we don't do very well. So, that's why we have a lot of thing going on at, at the Board. Okay? And another thing, may I ask, you know, on the early assessment program, the EAP based on Smarter Balance, usually, you know, I don't know if I remember correctly, you know, we used to use Cal Poly Pomona EAP test score. So, right now, we're using the Smarter Balance to determine the EAP or, or, you know, score, the metric?
So, the state defines EAP as the number, the percent of kids who have exceeded standards in English or math. So, that comes directly from the state. They're telling us this is how you're going to measure that and this is the metric you're going to use. So, it's, it's something that CDE said this is what you're to include.
Yeah, because before I saw people transcript, they take the Cal Poly Pomona EAP. When I went to seminar at Cal State Long Beach, it also mentioned that. But we, we base our EAP on the Smarter Balance test, you know, both for math and ELA.
Yes, that's how the state defines it though, and that's recent. That's not before, you're correct. The state defined it, or we defined it, I guess, as different levels. But the metric that they provide now is through Sback.
Yeah, so, you know, like I say, you know, it's big volume what we're supposed to, you know. But thank you very much for your presentation. There are a lot of data to digest, but you know, it, you know, it look, it is what it is. And that's why we try the best we can to, to improve the quality of education in Almani Union High School District. I base strictly on the number, you know. And the number doesn't look very good, but still, we, we trying. And you know, and thank you very much for your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Nguyen. Trustee Padilla?
Yes, I do. You know, recently, you guys have heard me talk about the layoffs from Pasadena Unified School District, from the Santa Ana Unified School District, and recently, 320 people who will be laid off from Coachella Valley. I know tonight, in tonight's agenda, we have item, it's item 12 on the regular agenda. And I know that we're, we're going to consider approval of a resolution to release employment of temporary certificated employees. And then there's nine, there's 19. I know that the LCAP, those dollars are generated by students on free and reduced lunch, English language learners, fostering youth and homeless. So, I would like for you to turn to the slide that talks about, you know, some of our teachers, particularly like the counselors that we have, we have at El Monte High School and we have at Mountain View High School to support English language learners. In terms of the funding, is some of that funding from LCAP? Or are we paying those positions from some other fund somewhere else?
For those two specific positions, they are actually listed as item four.
Okay, so, point, point to me where that is at.
Where's my pointer? Right, what's number four?
That's hard on my eyes, I can't really see.
Yeah, I know. It's just number four. It says supporting, support for ELs through counselors. It's number four, item four and goal three.
So, this is the funding that, that's the amount of money for the three years? Or that's the amount of funding for this year specifically?
This year specifically.
Okay, and this will be year three? This is the last year that we get that funding for this LCAP three-year cycle?
This is the first year of the LCAP three-year cycle.
Okay, so this is the first year of a three-year cycle. So, then we will probably get that same amount for the next two years.
So, in reference to the amount of supplemental and concentration funds, I actually requested a preliminary number based on...
Not supplemental and concentration, I'm talking about the base grant. This is the base amount for the LCAP, not the supplemental and concentration.
Well, this is referring to supplemental and concentration funds.
This is?
Yes. All of this that I presented today is supplemental and concentration funds for this school year.
And this is, this includes the additional funding that we get for, like, the kids that hit different areas? Not just English language learners, but I might have an English language learner who's also on free and reduced lunch. That is the total amount?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. These are the amounts that... These are the amounts that were budgeted and that's how much was actually expended.
Okay, and the reason that I bring that up is I did get some phone calls and people calling, like, am I going to lose my job? And I said, just relax. I said, we've been very transparent with the amount of money that we're putting on. And tonight's item on the agenda, it's kind of a process that we have to follow. And again, I'm not the business person. Can you talk a little bit about that, specifically as it pertains to English language learners? I don't know if Dr. Zuniga, who it is, but I want to go on record about how this document protects English language learners and how those positions will be included in this. But we have to go through this process because of the March 15. Whoever wants to take that, if it's in your department, can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, I can respond to that.
Okay.
This is a subject that we've been discussing in the last couple of weeks, as a matter of fact, and related to next year's budget. This actually, item here is specific to the 24-25 school year. So what we need to do is now is reevaluate each of the goals about the progress made. So what difference has the EL counselors made to contribute the support of these EL students at Mountain View High School and Almonte High School? So we need to identify through the data whether our students have been successful through evaluations of assessing our students and our counselors about what has worked, what has not worked. So we're going to do a comprehensive review for each of these goals to bring back to the board to say, identify what we can afford and we can provide to support English learners in this capacity would continue or we'd move in a different direction if it's not successful. That's not just for that goal. That goes for every single goal that we're going to have to cover and bring back to the board relative to adoption of the 25.6 LCAP plan. Keep in mind also that we continue to decline enrollment. So LCAP funding under SNC, including LCFF, will probably be less than we have seen in the past year, including this year. So that, we anticipate that. I think we were anticipating that a lot of these items will have to be reevaluated, whether you shift funding or continue or move in a different direction based on need and based on funding and assessment. So just wanted to kind of overview and simplify that.
So then we have to specifically look at the disaggregated data in English language arts, but only look at the data for English language learners?
Specific to this goal?
Huh?
Specific to this item?
Right. Yes, specific to this item and then specific to this plan. Because again, it's, these are the kids that are generating those dollars, is what I'm saying. So will we look at the English language learner disaggregated data for English language arts at Mountain View and the English language learner, ELD, not ELD, but English language learner data at both those schools, Mountain View and El Monte? Look at that disaggregated? Or we're just going to look at their ELA score for that high school?
So with English learners, it's not just about ELA scores because the reason they're English learners is because they haven't met proficiency. So it's really if they're making progress through learning English, which is through the LPAC.
Right.
If they're making progress even in their placement of class, moving, passing their ELD classes academically, if they're making progress. So it's not just one measure that we have to look at. We have to look at all measures.
So I'll make it more clear for you. Turn back to the data that you showed of about English ELA and whether we went up or whether we went down. You showed us data, right? But that's the whole district, not just one school. So you told us, did we go up in language arts or did we go down in language arts?
Slightly decreased.
Okay, so that's for the whole district? My point to you is, we will have to look at this data, but specifically disaggregated to El Monte High School and to Mountain View High School.
Yes, and we actually already started to do that on Friday with the principals.
Yeah.
They had to look at their own specific subgroups on where they were placed and the different indicators. So to identify the need, not just for ELs, for foster youths, for students on free and reduced lunch, for homeless. So we are doing that for every subgroup.
Right. So again, the subgroups are disaggregated. So we will look for the disaggregated data at each school?
Correct.
Okay, that was the answer to my question. The other question that I have is, turn to chronic absenteeism. I know you touched on it a little bit. And I know that our dashboard for high schools that doesn't contain the chronic absenteeism, but on LCAP it does. I couldn't really see it. I guess this is a horrible background for my eyes.
22.1. So it went from 25.2 to 22.1. So there was a decrease.
So then that means that we had fewer students because in our, the definition of chronic absenteeism is the number of kids that have reached 18 or more days. So for our school district, how many schools, how many kids are we talking about? And do we know how many chronics are at each school? Do we have that disaggregated data to then determine where we need to improve?
Would you want to, I mean, I can address it, but that falls within Mr. Leon's.
Yes, that is absolutely data that is available that Mr. Leon reviews with his team as they're working on improving attendance and reducing chronic absenteeism. So yes, they look at it by site and they work with site staff on that.
So what are those things that we're doing? And I'm just asking, you know, in terms of increasing or decreasing chronic absenteeism? I know that we've done the swag and we've done those types of things. But systematically in this district, what do we do to decrease chronic absenteeism?
So just generally speaking, a lot of contacting families, reaching out when they're not making, the students are not coming. And so that personal attention to supporting them, bringing them in, addressing other needs, whether they might be connecting them to resources and making sure that they are being connected to the school as often as possible. So yes, we have personnel and staff that take care of that through the attendance office, but also our support staff that work with our families to make sure that they have those needs met so that they can get to school. And that may include like access to transportation, right? Things that will help them come to school.
Got it. And so in terms of, a while back, the district had requested that, Dr. Rivas, that you create a flyer to better inform our students that were foster youth and homeless and McKinney-Vento. And under McKinney-Vento, the definition of homelessness is any child who is doubled up in a family. But I remember once when we offered the presentation, Mr. Padilla was rather angry when I heard that we did not spend all of our funds that could have been used with foster youth and homeless and with McKinney-Vento students. Are we doing a better job of informing the counselors to then relay that information to our students? That we can buy shoes, that we can buy uniforms, that we could buy whatever that need is for our students to remove all those barriers and of those problems that our students have?
I can answer that because that's what I lead.
Good.
So we actually meet with counselors three times a year. And so the first meeting that we have, I remind them on, this is McKinney-Vento Act. This is how we identify kids, be on the lookout, support, different indicators on what a student might need. Because what's hard at the high school level is kids might be embarrassed to say, you know what, I'm temporal and sheltered. I am doubled up. And so it's really asking them to keep an eye out because noticing certain patterns with kids, sometimes it might be attendance and that's the root cause of them not being in school.
You mean that they won't self-identify on the form that we give parents in terms of their living conditions because they have stigma?
Yes, correct. And so training, doing that on an annual basis with counselors. And then as a follow-up in January, also sending out the list. This is who we currently have, what are the changes? And it's continuous communication with them. They've been great troopers, trust me. I get them all the time. And I am always thankful to them because at the end of the day, they're the ones on the front lines working with the students and keeping an eye out.
Do you include child welfare and attendance people or just the counselors?
I've met with Mr. Leon and he's provided that. But I'm willing to do it, but because he's also familiar with the program, he's met with them.
He's provided what to who?
The same information to the CWAs and also to the comprehensive student support coordinators because the more people are aware, the better off they are. But I think that the goal is also to include a short training that I was made aware as part of the mandated training that just informs all staff of this is how you can help identify kids.
Yeah. Awesome. And then last question. Fernando or La Desma High School has our most at-promised students. And I know that, you know, they're written there in the, with the multiplier, equity multiplier. You now have to, it involved them. Talk a little bit, talk a little bit more about the equity multiplier. And as you're talking about that, how is this equity multiplier different from those additional fundings that Fernando La Desma got not too long ago? And it was a substantial amount of money, like 720,000 or, correct me if I'm wrong, that they needed to have gotten to provide services to students? Was that part of LCAP funding? Or did that come from another fund?
So I think we presented it initially last year as this year being the first year. And that is the same funds. That's the equity multiplier funds.
Okay, so, okay, really quick, just a follow-up and then I'll let you answer. So I want to know, if I'm a parent and I have children at Fernando La Desma, with this extra funding, what is my child going to benefit from more at Fernando La Desma because they're more at-promised than some of our other campuses? Specifically, I know you spoke about it generically, but what does it mean to me as a kid at Fernando La Desma or Community Day School? You know, because the way, the way these plans are written, sometimes I have a hard time with them because it'll say, all students will, blah, 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 blah. All students will, that's the way all the plans are written. But the reason that this is done is so that these kids get additional stuff because they're more at-promised. So what, what are those things that are additional that my students at Fernando La Desma are going to get?
That's a great question. And so I worked with the La Desma team in developing their plan. And so if you can take us to the slide that has that equity multiplier, there you go. You'll see at the bottom there, under the metrics, the actual actions that they've identified. And these are simplified, but really, one of the areas that they focused on was an expanding course offerings for students. So one of the things that the staff identify in order to prepare students to graduate and be able to get back to either their comprehensive site or pursue a career or potentially even go to a community college was a broader access because they have a lot less staff to offer courses and their elective choices were very narrow. So what they're doing is providing additional courses on the master schedule. They will be implementing that in this next quarter. They will be opening up, adding additional courses. So for students, that means I might now have access to art class that I didn't have before, access to another elective that wasn't available for me before. So it expanded the course offerings for the students. It also supports instructional materials. And it is also intended to provide some targeted engagement strategies with some mentoring where staff can work with, one-to-one with students in providing that support so that they can be more successful. It is important to note that the reason, when we're looking at the equity multiplier funds, what we need to target on those actions are very specific to the areas in which the school wasn't doing well. So in the case of La Desma, that was more geared around the academic side of the house, which was graduation requirements, their Smarter Balance results. And so these goals are intended to support that particular area. Whereas with CDS, it was more around behavior, so the suspension. So the actions in that particular plan tended to be more responsive to additional supports outside of the classroom. So you'll see here for La Desma, a lot more focus on the actual classroom and expanding the course access for students.
Do these funds allow for them to get more support if they need like more instructional support specialist or another teacher to, you know, to increase the sections and stuff?
That's a possibility. That's how we're expanding course offerings is additional sections by one-fifth. That may lead to full staff in the future. But because this is the first year we have these equity multiplier funds, we don't know at what degree they're going to be continued to be funded. So we definitely don't want to add a lot of new staff with these funds until we are more familiar with that. And so right now, we're using extra period assignments for teachers to be able to expand that.
Okay, thank you. No further questions. I'll talk to Dr. Zuniga. I want to, I want to know more details about that school specifically. But thank you so much. No further questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Trustee, Dr. Galavies?
I just want to start off by saying thank you for your presentation. I actually gave kudos to Dr. Rivas earlier tonight saying that when I looked at this presentation yesterday, I knew exactly where you pulled the data from. And I thought that there were some really great points that we mentioned here. And if you're looking at the data like holistically, realistically, we're improving in a lot of areas. So like, it's interesting if you focus on one specific area, but if you're looking at it holistically, there's so much growth all the way around. Like when you look at our DNF rates, everything has kind of like gone down with the exception of social science. So there were like some big things that like stuck out to me as I was looking through the data. I was actually at a conference this past weekend all about CTE and we were pooling some of this data for our sites in one of those breakout sessions. So I was like, oh, I know where she got all this from.
How exciting.
It was a great conference, Educating for Careers It was, it was a great conference, Educating for Careers up in Sacramento. One of my other things that I thought was really amazing was how we've improved the reclassification rate. Was it by 4% or 5%, something like that, right? Which is phenomenal because if you know about LCAP exams, if you have ever had to deal with that kind of data, if you've ever had to give those exams, if you've ever like been in the trenches of EL World, you know that as students age and become like LTALs, the exam gets harder and harder. And so traditionally, LCAP reclassification rates do not necessarily improve at the secondary level, like at the high school level. So that was really good to see. So I don't know, I looked, as I was looking through these charts, I saw so many good things. And yeah, there's room for growth, right? Across the country, there's room for growth. There's definitely room for growth in math, but that's like a problem across the country. But overall, I saw some really great things. So thank you for this presentation. I really like the data and the charts and so, job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Galavies. Trustee, Dr. Guzman.
Yes, I want to echo Dr. Galavies's praise for not only putting this together and obviously providing the sources of where this data is coming from, but the holistic, the big picture, right? It does sound like there's a lot of improvement and a lot of great work going on. The one area that I did have questions and I think, and Mr. Padilla touched on it earlier, slide 14, on the chronic absenteeism. And I think that's a big one because yes, there's an improvement from the baseline, but it's still a very troubling percentage. And I had a couple of questions. One, are we using data to identify and address the attendance issues early? Because really, you know, with chronic absenteeism, we can't do anything about declining. Well, we could do things about declining enrollment, but it's, a lot of things are not within our control. Like high cost of rent and living here, among other issues. But with, with attendance, we can definitely do, do more, especially with chronic absenteeism. So my, one of my questions is, are we using data to track that early on? Because really, students are going to miss for a whole host of reasons. We can't anticipate them all. We can't prevent them all. But when I see 22% district-wide of chronic absenteeism, that to me is, is a little troubling. So that's my first question, Edith. Are we using data to address? Or Dr. Rivas, identify and address these issues early on?
Yes, and as I shared earlier, through Mr. Leon's office, he is the one that compiles and works with the sites on identifying the students pretty early on. Because we know that to get to chronic absenteeism, it's a percentage of the year absences. So pretty early on, you can tell like, hey, if we are a month into the school year, these are the students that are already trending at that rate. And so you begin to identify those students by name and begin to establish those lists of contacts and follow through. And he does hold regular meetings with the staff to be reviewing that data and information and developing plans for reaching out and connecting, again, reconnecting and re-engaging students as much as possible. So I can definitely have him provide, if you would like, some additional information with regard to the process that he uses, if you're interested in that. But essentially, yes, he does use data.
Yes, I would be very much interested in that, having more information on that. The other, the other question, you mentioned right now and earlier about some of the, the interventions being used or some of the actions being taken to step in early on. Are any of the practices that you're using for this particular evidence-based or best practices are rooted in, in best practice or evidence-based in terms of reducing chronic absenteeism?
We believe so. I mean, one of them is starting with the use of data, right? And so when you're looking at students and identifying them early, that is a practice that if we're looking at ongoing improvement is using data that is readily available and that the staff can use to reflect. So in that sense, yes. The other piece of that is looking at those personal contacts. We know that when families are able to connect to a central person on the school and have a face to connect with, that draws them in when there is a level of connection with at least one adult on the campus. Is, has shown that that reengages students, right? Having someone that they connect with. But also when we're working on meeting their needs is another thing that we know works. Because when students' needs are met, then they're more likely to be in attendance. So we believe that the strategies that are being put together and working with are leading to that and they're, which you would say is evidence-based. So yes, I, I do believe that we are working with those strategies that are working. And I know that Mr. Leon attends regular meetings as well to learn about practices with other educators in similar positions so that we can continue to reconnect and re-engage students.
Thank you, Edith, for that. No further questions.
Thank you, Dr. Guzman. I don't have any questions. Just thank you to Mrs. Cheveria and to Dr. Rivas for answering the board's questions tonight. Thank you for the presentation. I will say that, I know the, the LCAP is, it's, it's state funding, but obviously we rely on federal dollars as well to supplement a lot of our needs here. And I was just sharing with my colleagues and Dr. Zuniga, I'd received an alert from the Washington Post that the president assigned an executive order to dismantle the Department of Education. So it's going to be a very challenging future for us. I literally don't know what's going to happen tomorrow morning or the next day. But we're going to continue to soldier on and do what we need to do to best serve our students. So thank you for your presentation tonight. Okay, moving on to our agenda tonight, we have on consent or consent agenda. Are there any items that a member would like to pull for discussion? I will start with trustee Nguyen. No items?
Yeah.
Thank you. Trustee Padilla?
I'll just make some comments. I actually do want to make some comments regarding item. Sorry, my vision is really bad today. I don't know what the heck's wrong with my eyes. Mr. Briones, as he, as he looking at that, I'd like to just make a request on consent item number nine, I believe. Check that.
The home-to-school transportation plan?
No. What's the item, Dr. Rivas? Number, what we're looking at?
Item number 15.
Number 15? The, yeah, on the actual contract, it's the, it's corrected as far as contractor or vendor, East Sanguaro Valley American Job Center of California. On the board title, there was an additional name put in front of it called Goodwill Southern California. So I'd like to just go on record that the actual name is the East Sanguaro Valley American Job Center of California. So if you can make that a record today and that way it's corrected. The contract's fine. It, it's just more about the title that was added on there.
The board title needs to be amended to remove Goodwill Southern California?
Yes, on the, on the actual title.
The actual title. Everything else stays the same.
That's correct.
Okay, so item 15, we'll make sure that it's amended. Doesn't need to be pulled, though?
No.
Yes.
Okay, got it. Mr. Padilla?
Yeah, it was seven, seven, seven and nine, Mr. Briones.
Okay, one second. Items E7 and E9?
Yeah, E7 and nine.
Okay, 7 and 9. Trustee, Dr. Galavies?
No items.
No items. Trustee, Dr. Guzman?
No items.
Okay. So at this time, I'll, I'll accept a motion to adopt the consent agenda with the exception of item 7 and 9 and with item 15 where the title has been amended to remove Goodwill Southern California. No other changes. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with those changes?
I motion.
Moved by trustee Dr. Guzman. Is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by trustee Dr. Galavies. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of adopting the consent agenda with the exception of item 7 and 9 and 15 as amended? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none. The consent counters, or consent agenda is approved. Trustee Padilla, number seven?
Yeah, number seven. It's, consider approval to ratify non-public school individual service agreements for the 2024-2025 school year for students with exceptional needs unable to be served by the Almani Union High School District Educational Program. Dr. Zuniga, can you tell us the, the names of the non-public schools that our board uses to support the needs of special education students? And how many, how many students are we talking about there? And what is the dollar amount that our district is paying out to support and meet the needs of these children's IEPs?
We don't have, I don't have that final list in front of me, but I can provide that to you in your Friday memo. I reached out to Dr. Rivas already relative to the request that we, we discussed earlier. So there is a multiple of MPSs that provide services to our students that we cannot unfortunately accommodate to our, our students. So therefore the result is MPSs. Three of them are mentioned in the actual public content this evening, Beach City Learning Center, for example. And there's two other ones that are listed there. We'll be more than happy to provide you a list. I believe also the number of students that attend and each MPSs and the amount committed to each MPSs total. Is that correct?
Thank you, Dr. Zuniga. I, I know that and I just would like to thank my, my colleagues in the school board and the Almani Union High School District because we do quite a bit to support the needs of our special education students. And this is a great example of how we meet our financial needs. And this is one of the areas that concerns me in terms of when you hear that our federal government will be dismantling the Department of Education. And this is one that is of very high concern for me because that's how we fund MPSs. Or correct me if I'm wrong, do we use state dollars as well or a combination of state and federal?
That's correct. Combination of both.
But if the federal government, if those fundings were not to come, it would put a burden on school districts to try to find the resources with state funding alone.
It would be detrimental to our programs.
Absolutely. So I, I'm just glad that we're able to pay these non-public schools through our budget. And again, that's another example of how this district, you know, meets its, its legal responsibilities as it pertains to meeting the needs of, of special education students. That's it for number seven. Mr. Briones?
Thank you. So at this time, if there's no further discussion on item number seven, under consent, is there a motion to consider approval to ratify the non-public school individual service agreements for the 2024-2025 school year for students with exceptional needs unable to be served by the Almani Union High School District Educational Program?
I move to approve.
Moved by trustee Padilla. Is there a second?
I second that motion.
Seconded by trustee Dr. Guzman. No further discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none. Item number seven is approved. Item number nine is also yours, Mr. Padilla.
Yeah, number nine is annual update to the home-to-school transportation plan for the 60% reimbursement. I just, I'm glad that the state of California has provided this funding because this is a major expenditure for so many school districts. You know, we spend education, we spend dollars on transportation for special education students, for McKinney-Vento students that need transportation from wherever they move to to be able to stay in their home school. So, Dr. Zuniga, this 60% will be given back to us. And this is not just for special education, it's also for the McKinney-Vento students, which are our homeless students or for foster youth and homeless and then any other type of transportation that we provide. I know that in the past, we had a problem with transportation where there was limited buses, limited busing. So we asked our parents to be able to transport their own children to their respective schools. And we had in a mileage reimbursement, reimbursement program. Does it include all of those different modes of transportation? That we get that 60% back from all of those programs?
That's correct. Yeah, it does include it. And our parents continue to bring their children to and from school as well. And I also want to add that we service about close to 50 students that live in the South Almani boundary because they're far away from South Almani High School, which has always been a problem for us. So we have two bus routes now that started this, this January, I believe, this part, half of the school year. We have one student that actually takes the bus that benefits her from coming, going to South Almani, coming home as well, which is our own student board member too.
Thank you so much for that information. And I, I just would like to say that because you brought up something that, a mode of transportation that had been lacking for so many years that so many parents would, would come to board members and say, I don't want my kid walking from over here on Garvey all the way to South Almani. You know, I don't want my little girl walking or my little boy. It's, it's very, very dangerous. So I'm glad that we were finally able to do that study and, and put the routes in place. I know that parents are very appreciative and I'm glad to see that our, our student trustee is a great example of how it's benefited her. So thank you for that.
Thank this guy, this, this, Dr. Lynn. He's, he's the one that put the routes together.
Thank you so much.
He counted the addresses of all the students that were far away and made those decisions on those routes. And this is the best thing that has happened to South Almani High School students.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you so much. You want to say something?
Yes, actually. So in middle school is when I would like start taking the bus. And honestly, especially in like the area I live, since it's very like secluded, like, like every time I get a ride home from, from like some after-school thing and, and I give people my direct, like directions to my house, they're like, why is it so like hidden? It's like in between factories. I'm like, yeah. And they're like, and you walk here? And I'm like, oh, well, yeah, I have to. Like freshman year, I would go walking to school and back home with my brother. And then we would stay for sports and then I'd have my ASB things and I'd just be like right here with everything. And then one time it hailed on us too and we had to like run inside the, the church. But honestly, I really, really, really love the, the bus transportation. And I'm, and I'm positive and 100% sure that all the other students that ride them, that ride the bus, the buses do too. Like honestly, they're, they're really great. We really, really appreciate it. We have to wake up early, but you know, like there's always going to be like little things like that. But honestly, it, it's much better than having to walk. Whether that be during like the rain, the hot sun, you know? It's, it's just something that I think all the students appreciate. So thank you.
Thank you for sharing. I appreciate that. And the last thing, Dr. Zuniga, is that I know that we also buy transportation through MTA to provide bus passes and, and the students have to sign up with their community liaison and so on and so forth with their ID number. Do we also get part of that reimbursement from those funds that we expend from the MTA passes?
When we wrote the plan, we included that as evidence that the district was making steps in providing transportation means to students and that was included in the actual plan itself.
Oh, wow, that is great. So thank you, thank you so much. And again, thank you, Dr. Lynn. Very much appreciated and the parents appreciate it as well. I've heard a lot of positives. And here you have the most important client saying that to you directly. So I move to approve item number nine, Mr. Briones, annual update to the home school transportation plan for 60% reimbursement.
All right, it's been moved. Is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by trustee Dr. Galavies. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving item number nine under consent, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none. Item number nine is approved.
Yep.
All right, moving on to our regular agenda. This item has a presentation, item number one, consider approval of second interim financial report and board certification of the financial stability of the district for fiscal year 2024 through 2025 and the two subsequent years, 2025 through 2026 and 2026 through 2027. Dr. Zuniga?
Yes, thank you again, Board President Briones. My pleasure to introduce, no need introduction, but I want to formally introduce who will be presenting this evening. I want to welcome Mr. Norton, who is sitting over here patiently. He's our Director of Fiscal Services, who is always working behind the scenes and developing and just keeping track of where we're at with, relative to our budget. And also just how much I appreciate him for being here this evening and also supporting Dr. Lynn in this process. It's a, it's a teamwork, not only these two individuals, but others that have contributed in the business office too. And at last, obviously no introduction needed, but Dr. Lynn, again, is prepared to present this evening alongside our Director of Fiscal Services, Mr. Norton too. So I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Lynn.
Great, thank you, Dr. Zuniga. Good evening, Board President Briones, members of the Board of Education, executive team. This evening, we're, we're talking about the second interim report. And this is a required report that we have to submit to the county by March 15th. Okay, on the next slide, we have the two legislations that we are required to meet. The first one requires that we file our fiscal condition for periods ending October 31st before December 15th and the period ending January 31st before March 15th. So we have to file those reports based on those snapshots, October 31st and January 31st. The second legislation there requires that we file a three-year, multi-year projection. So it's not good enough that we have, we're able to make ends meet for just one year this year. We'll have to make ends meet for this year and two out years. So it's a three-year, multi-year projections that we need to comply with that legislation. On this slide, we've seen this before. This is to recap on the road trip that we've collectively had since the adoption of this year's budget last June. We've had the budget study in October, followed by the first interim reporting before winter break. And we've had some significant developments in the three months between the first interim and the second interim that we're presenting tonight. So what are, what were those developments in the last three months? Well, since October 31st, when we had the first interim snapshot, we had the November elections. And that brought about some major changes, immigration relations, possible elimination of the Department of Education. We've had also the fires, school closures. And also, most importantly and most impactful for us was the governor's budget proposal in January. That provided us with funding factor information as to how we developed this budget, this report, second interim report. So the three different certification levels. The negative certification in red means that a school district cannot meet its financial obligations for this and two future years. A qualified means that a school district is borderline and may not, and may not be able to meet its financial obligations for those three years. And a positive certification means that the school district can meet its financial obligations for all three years. Although I'm happy to report that we are recommending a positive certification, we do have continued declining enrollment, a decrease in enrollment, a tie-to-ADA decrease. Right? ADA is a proportion of enrollment and we're funded based on ADA while our staffing numbers have not been commensurate with that decline. So that's the caveat that I want to share with the board. We will need to make some staffing adjustments in the near future in order to remain positively certified. Because if we're not positively certified, which is negative or qualified, we risk becoming a, a, a district that's, that's in receivership by the state. And we certainly don't want to be in that situation. We want to remain positive in our certification status. Okay, next slide is, at this point, I would like to invite Dr., not that, David Norton, Director of Fiscal Services, to the podium. Yeah, just promoted you to, doctor, to the podium to provide details about the second interim report.
All right. Good evening, board members, President Briones, Dr. Zuniga, thank you for those kind words. And also, Dr. Lynn for that, those kind words too. So heading into this second interim, the assumptions are that S and C, so that really part of what you just saw, the LCAP presentation, is it going to be funded $37,38,660 this year. All our assumptions every year include step and column, that is, as people move up through longevity and increase in their, in the steps on the pay scale. Calster, the two pension funds, Calsters and Calpers, and Calsters at 19.10%, that's been stable for a while. And just to add to that, so certificated staff are receiving a total of about 23 and a percentage 23 and a half for all employer-paid benefits. Calpers, the rate is at 27.05% this year. And we're seeing a change in this. This is the one that's been going up over years and now it's starting to flatten out a bit. And in the same vein, the total amount for, that we pay in employer benefits for classified staff is at 37%. So this is a big chunk, pension is a big chunk of employer benefits towards employees and staff. We have a routine and restricted maintenance contribution. That's what that RRMA stands for, contribution of 3% that's required. We're expecting to receive $73.62 for ADA and we're going to, we're planning on $2 million for interfund transfers this year as we cover the maintenance op- as we cover the maintenance operations and also some of our capital outlay expenses. So now we start looking at some of the other factors in a little bit more detail. So the statutory COLA for this year is 1.07%. In '25, '26 is 2.43, that's down a half a percent from what it was at the first interim. In turn, the '26, '27 statutory COLA is now projected to be 3.5. Remember those out years, that's '25, '26 and '26, '27 could change again, once we get to that, uh, once we hear the governor's proposal. Projected enrollment follows that declining path that we've seen over the years. Our P2 ADA, we're projecting it at 6,800 at this point, and then that's two on a slight decline. The ratio of unduplicated pupils remains the same at 90%. It's pretty constant amongst that population. Now, our funded ADA, this is an important one, board members have asked about this for us, so we have that three-year funded average for our ADA. So it takes the two prior years along with the current year to determine what our ADA is. And so we're actually funding our kids as if we were at a little bit higher rate. Because we're in a claiming a little bit more based on this funded ADA formula. The lottery unrestricted and restricted combined comes at um $273 and that's on a flat projection until we get better information. Right now, we're at uh, I'm projecting certificated uh non-management FTEs. The current year is 513. And you have the numbers I have projected out for the next two years. Of course, there are a lot of factors that come into play on what that will actually be. Um, and then there are the Calpers and pension fund rates uh that we just went over and what it's gonna look like in the out years. So revenue for the coming year is, or for the current year is currently projected at $156,387 and $274. Out of that, $109,890 is unrestricted and restricted is forty six, almost 46 and a half million. And then there's that breakdown for you, 5% and amount per category. The expense projections, on the other hand, were uh projected to expend $197.7 million. And of that, the 126 and a half is unrestricted and another 71, 161,814 for restricted. Now, these are projections. As we go out through the year, we're gonna have uh, this is the path we're on. Uh, depending on what happens in the next few months, that number could go up or down a little bit. But we always project all that we have budgeted and then um, you know, the revenue we have. Plus, we have some of the money that was um in the leftover from prior years that we're still spending down. So obviously, if you compare the general fund expenses versus revenue, you see that we're still in a deficit spending mode. Next slide, please. So the general fund breakdown, a little bit better view of the categories of um, a little bit different view rather of the categories for this year. So unrestricted, the revenues are 133. And this is including uh the contributions to special ed. When you reduce those, that is, you take it out of the unrestricted, put it over restricted, that's the little arrow it's showing you. And how it affects the amount of expenditures or actual revenue and expenditures that will show up in each column. That is the unrestricted and restricted. When we look at those all combined, we're projected to be about spending down about 16 and a half million more this year in the unrestricted and 24 and a half million in the uh, I'm sorry, 16 and a half million in the, yeah, unrestricted and 24 and a half and restricted for a combined total of 41,316. Now, you remember when we started the year, that projection was around 35 million. So we've increased, you know, we're on this pace to spend more than what we've had. In turn, that means that the ending fund balance is gonna change too, and that drops it down from 82 million that we started the year with down to 40,773,192 by year's end. The rest of those figures are really what we call the components of the ending fund balance. All the, how we categorize all the money that's in that 40,773 ending balance projection, which includes the uh reserve for economic uncertainty, uncertainties which is required accounting uh feature that we have to show. All right, next slide. So when we look at the adopted versus projected, so '24, '25, we're at 134,315. It's actually a little bit lower. Um, you remember the governor um had to help us out this year by dipping into the rainy day fund after all the atmospheric rivers. They hit us last year, what, some 51 hit the state and I think a a good portion of that hit Southern California, had effect on revenue, so they're down a little bit. Total expenses have gone up some. Um, consequently, we're still with that uh rate of uh when you take out the contributions, we're still on a deficit spending projection. And then you see what that looks like for the next two years out. Next slide, please. And so, final one I'll speak about today is the other funds. So besides the general fund budget, we had a lot of other funds. That's adult ed, nutrition services, or the cafeteria fund, or deferred maintenance. We have our reserve for a non-capital outlay, post-employment benefits, the building fund, capital facilities, and the building fund, that's the bond fund. Most people know that. Capital facilities is also where we get local revenue for um for our developer fees. And we have a facilities uh fund, that county school facilities fund that we created. We're still waiting for information on, from the state on how much we might get. So there's really not much in there at this point. And then, of course, the capital outlay for projects, that is contributions on the district side for capital projects. So um, in each column, you'll see our beginning balance and then you have the revenue and transfers in plus expenses and transfers out, because some of these projects have to pay for a little bit for um, you know, their expenses that they obtain from the district office and other support within the district. Consequently, you have the ending balance and what they'll look like. My projection on what they'll look like come June 30th of this year. At this point, I'm gonna hand it back to Dr. Lynn.
Thank you, Mr. Norton. I would like to uh take this opportunity to publicly acknowledge Mr. Norton for his outstanding diligence and dedication. I don't know if you know this, but he frequently works late into the evenings and he comes in on the weekends to not only make sure that the district meets state and county compliance requirements, but to ensure that the district remains financially solvent. So thank you, David, for that. Um, the 166-page second interim report, which is attached to this agenda, um contains the details. This is just the executive summary uh presentation. But in that 166-page second interim report that Mrs. Norton developed, uh is basically a snapshot in time from the January 31st, a set of data. And, you know, at best, the second interim is a projection. So that's the limitations of any projection is that inherent in those, in a projection is the uh, it's the limitation, um, the report, it's the limitation on the report's predictive powers, right? So we cannot say that this is a it's gonna have, it's gonna predict the exact future. Um, it is basically a crystal ball to show us what's, what the, a possible future uh may exist. So the numbers analyzed were captured on, again, on Ju- January 31st. Uh, we know that the numbers are guaranteed to change, um, which makes the second interim report exactly wrong and approximately right. So at best, it provides us a strong, a strong directional sense of the district's fiscal health and it provides time for the district to make adjustments. So we do have to give the time. Um, on the, like, other districts um that are currently um having reductions in force, we do have time to make adjustments, meaningful adjustments moving forward. Um, on the next slide, we have the the hurdles that we we know about. Um, this was presented initially in October. Um, I rearranged the five challenges. Um, and the biggest one, the the biggest two that we're facing, the other three are are, you know, significant, but really, we have the top two. The top two are the declining enrollment and the end of one-time funds. Education is a lagging indicator in terms of funding. When we get um, you know, uh, the pandemic, we will have to spend the money first and then later on, the money will flow in. And then all of a sudden, we have a lot of money sitting there and people are like, wait, you have all that reserve. You're hiding all that money. No, the money came in because the government started funding schools after the fact, right? And now the economy, we're not doing too well economically. I mean, we we see macroeconomic shifts now. But we have that reserve that we're spending down very fast at an alarming rate to the point where it's not just making ends meet for this year, but for two subsequent years. And that's what the law requires when we develop the second interim in the multi-year projections. And so in some ways, there is that canary in the coal mine um analogy. We know what's coming. We just have that extra time to make adjustments, okay? And the top two is really um the declining enrollment piece and the end of one-time funds. On the next slide, uh, what's coming up is our governor's May revision. That basically sets the stage for how we project next year's budget. Just like, you know, what David presented, uh, the funding factors, those are the independent variables. If we were to plot this, that would be the variables in the X-axis, the X-axis variables, right? Um, the dependent variable would be the Y-axis. In this case, it would be what are we doing in terms of programs and, you know, funding, right? The funding factors come from the state. Those are the independent variables. And then what David does and his team, uh, what they do best is really taking that with wisdom and not just algorithmically, but with their experience and wisdom, come up with a balanced budget, not for, not just for this year, but for the two out years as well. Um, and it takes a lot of work. Um, you can tell just, you know, the 166 pages. I don't think it was fun to create because I've seen you uh cringing and frowning many evenings and, you know, trying to figure out how to make it work. Um, the positive news is that we do, we are able to make it work. And so therefore, the recommendation to the board is that we are able to make we're able to meet our fiscal obligations for this and the two subsequent years. And the recommendation is to approve the second interim report so we can file this as a positive certification with the County Office of Education by March 15th.
Thank you, Dr. Lynn.
Yep.
There's nothing further to share?
I have, I have a question for Dr. Lynn.
All right, give me one second. Um, there's no, nothing further to share, Dr. Zuniga? Okay, then I'll open it up to questions from my colleagues, starting with Mr. Nguyen.
Uh, on the, one of the report unrestricted general fund adopted versus projected, that the contribution, the red number is negative. So I mean, I'm, I'm, I mean, you you used to explain it before, so why is it negative? You know, where did that money come from? Contribution.
Is it this one?
You know, that, you know, you had, uh, yeah.
So the contribution, um, the contributions come from general fund. This is the ending balance, sizable ending balance we we got during COVID, the one-time funds. And so we are spending it down very quickly. So the net there for the '24, '25 is negative $12 million. The next one is negative 16 million. We keep on spending it down. So the adopted budget is what the board approved in June, last June. The projected budget for '24, '25, in this case, is the second interim snapshot. The most accurate information we have, we have as of January 31st.
So the red number, this is money that we're spending from one-time fund? What?
Mostly from one-time fund because, yes.
The ESAR fund?
Uh, no, ESAR, we're done with ESAR uh as of September 30th. So this would be the one-time funds in the committed silos. We have money committed in, for example, SAM cases, $2.5 million. We're gonna exhaust all that. But what are we gonna do with the SAM, the sexual assault molestation cases? Well, I'm also working with JPAs, trying to figure out how we can save on those litigations by moving to larger JPAs while we're spending what we set aside. So it's not like we're gonna spend that money and not have any backup. We're, we're looking at it from risk management, fiscal, different domains, safety and training, and training our teachers. So it's a multifaceted approach, not just fiscal.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, trustee Nguyen. Any other questions from the board?
Yes, I have questions.
Trustee Padia?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. David Norton. Always appreciate your hard work and the collaboration that you and Dr. Lynn. Uh, you're you're a good, uh, a good duo, you know, so I appreciate your work. I want to speak about declining enrollment. We all know that, you know, most districts in the San Gabriel area are suffering from declining enrollment. And if you have less students, you need less teachers. So I would like for you guys to turn to the chart. It shows the number of FTEs that we currently have for this year because this report has to show that we can pay our bills during this current year and then two more years after that. So when you look, and you look at this chart and you look at the certificated FTE, this is full-time equivalent employees, okay? Mr. Padia always likes to lean into the discomfort, okay? And you know, I say things that are not comfortable, but they need to be said because I do not want to be a Pasadena Unified School District. I do not want to be a Sonana Unified School District. And I don't want to be a Coachella Valley Unified School District with all these people that all of a sudden get word that their board sat on their, you know what, and uh, they never told them about it, okay? Now, we're all highly, not a business official, but you know, I I got a lot of credentials and a master's degree. So according to this, we have 513 certificated FTEs. That's a fancy word for teachers, okay? So currently, we have 513 teachers this year. Am I reading that correctly, Mr. Norton? Okay, so based on this report in current time, next year, according to our number of students that we're going to have, we're not gonna need 513 teachers. We're only going to need 435. So according to this data, we might need a reduction of teachers by the number of 78. We're gonna need 78 less teachers or full-time equivalent, which could be counselors, which could be teachers, or is this just teachers?
Right, so that figure would be its certificated staff of all categories. So it could be counselors, it could be teachers. That's something that would have to be decided at, I must say, at a higher level because you said the word need.
Got it. So it's not just teachers, it might look at counselors, it's gonna be looking at how many students we've got based on our enrollment, correct? So according to this, we might not need 78 full-time equivalent employees. And then the year after that, we might lose another 12, according to the current numbers that we have. But like Dr. Lynn explained it, this could be uh exactly wrong, or it could be positively right?
Approximately right.
Approximately right? Okay, so again, I I don't want to be secretive about this. I want this to be out there in the open and for people to know because I I I want people to know, like, this is the reality of what can we afford? So again, that's 78, what, 78 plus 12? In the next two years, we're gonna need uh 70, 80, 88, and 90? 90 less FTEs? Am I adding that correctly? 78 plus 12?
I would say we would need all the teachers and non-management FTE, certificated non-management FTEs. We need them uh because they serve our students directly. Because this is a model and numbers, right? But behind the numbers are livelihoods.
Yes.
And so I would say we need them, but the thing is, can we afford that many given the declining enrollment? And the answer is, for this model to work, we have to make it affordable. And once we make it affordable, it's not just this year, but the two out years, then we're able to certify positively with the county.
Right. Well, you made that sound really, really pretty. But the answer is that if we cannot afford them, we cannot keep them.
Right.
Okay, I know you said it very nice, but Mr. Padia just says it a little more, not nice, like more real. The other thing is uh the end of one-time funds. Okay, the end of one-time funds um are, for example, these 19 positions that we have today, are those the positions that we're paying from our one-time funds and that's item tonight, uh, item 12 on the E12? Is is there a correlation between those temporary teachers and these one-time funds, or are they different staff?
They are. The 19 will come out of, is included in that 78.
In the one-time funds?
Yes.
Okay.
So, yes.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So that model right there, '25, '26, where it goes from 513 to 435, that reduction in force of 40, uh, 78 non-management certificated FTEs in includes the 19. So the 19 are the ones we can do today. And then the 40, uh, you know, the 78, um, so 19 is included in the 78.
19 is included in 78, okay? And then uh, another reason that I touched on tonight is we don't know, we all don't know what's gonna happen with um the federal uh the Department of Education. And even with the, with the existence of the Department of Education, we only get funded for special ed at what, 30%?
12.5%?
12%. Initially, it was supposed to be that. So this is why um when I talked about the topic of um non-public schools, it would definitely be detrimental to districts like us, because we we pay a lot of NPSs in this district, quite a bit. And, and NPSs are not, are not cheap. I mean, we pay $25,000, $35,000, $40,000, dependents on the needs of the... So this is something that does keep me up at night. This is something that is very, very concerning to me. And then I, I know Mr. Quee, Mr. Nguyen talked about those red numbers, right? And those red numbers, you talked about Assembly Bill 218, SAM claims, which are the sexual assault molestation claims. Repeat again what you said about that? Talk, talk about that, it, it wasn't clear to me. Make it crystal clear to me, I didn't understand it.
So we have set aside, we committed, the board has committed $24 million. The current amount that we have in committed funds is $24 million. This was because, and I'm gonna get into the weeds just a little bit because the requirement is when the state rainy day fund exceeds 3%, then school districts that have a ending balance of more than 10%, we will have to commit the difference. Okay, so we, we currently have about $24 million in committed funds. There are two types of ending balances. One is the committed funds, which needs a board resolution to commit and to uncommit. In this case, we're gonna need to propose uncommitting those funds so we could continue operating as a school district. So we will present to the board in the future resolutions to uncommit those funds. The other is the assigned and undesigned. And we saw an example of that, let me see if I could show you right there. So you see the ending balance, June 30th? The committed is $24 million. This is the third line from the bottom, $24 million. That's the current unrestricted amount that we have. This is like the, the belly fat, right? The reserve that we have that we could tap into. By year three of this multi-year projections, we're, we're taking it down to zero. So the question that Board Member Quee asked is, what was in that? What is in that committed fund, right? 2.5 million was set aside or committed for SAM's litigations. So we can't afford not to use that money right now. We have to, to make ends meet for three years. But to use it, we have to figure out another way to backfill. And how do you backfill? Well, reduce the liability and exposure. How do we do that? Join bigger JPAs that have less exposure and go through that process, that painful process of restructuring, risk management. That helps a little, but every little bit contributes to us freeing up money because then we don't have to cut that many positions, right? Every penny we save was saved on livelihoods. So that's the goal.
And when you say JPAs, you know, you're a business person, but a regular person does not know what a JPA is, Joint Powers Authority. And that means that multiple districts join together and they pay their dues together. And it's kind of like a, a United Nations of, of some sort. When one district gets sued, you use that pot of money to pay the lawsuits from one district.
Right.
Correct?
Yes, it is.
You explained it in, in your terms.
Yes, JPA is an acronym. It is a, a legal entity that the state allows school districts to form, to pool risk and assets. So when you have more members, then there is more protection. So that's the concept of, you know, pooling risks. So we do have, we recently went from the SELF JPA, which has high exposure and they are reassessing us and giving us bills after the fact, like a mil, over a million dollars last year that we didn't budget for. And we anticipate SELF, which is the JPA that we were with for many years, will continue to assess us, we just don't know how much because SELF also got, you know, all the districts in SELF got sued, you know, with SAM's, SAM's litigations. So moving us now to SAFER gets us another $20 million in protection, excess liability protection with a lower premium. That's a no-brainer for me, right? So thank you to the board for approving that, you know, that resolution to move JPAs to SAFER, which is an acronym, I don't have in my head, but it's a, it's a larger JPA with less exposure and giving us more protection. So with that protection, now we can free up 2.5 million dollars here to sustain positions. So to buy us that time. And that's just one example, okay?
Got it. And then the pension costs. We all know that STIRS is a lot more stable pension than PERS is. You know, I've seen PERS go up year after year after year. At any point, will PERS employees or classified employees in our district, which fall into PERS, at any point will they have to pay into this? Or does the district pick up the, the, the increase in this pension?
So PERS employees, just like STIRS employees, pay their fair share of contributions. What's listed on this, the last two rows here, are what the district is obligated to contribute.
So every year, it, it, it goes up, correct?
Yeah, for PERS, it's still going up. And the thing is, it does change every year. The numbers will look different since the last presentation or the, since the budget presentation, mainly because the PERS board establishes what the district would need to contribute.
Got it. So my last and final question, if, if I'm a person and I'm watching this meeting, the question I would have for you as a, not the chief business off, business officer, but the Assistant Superintendent of Business Services is, you know, 78 less FTEs and then 12 after that. If I'm an employee of this district, when will we look at another report to see if these numbers are going to change and get worse or get better to kind of? No, no, like, hey, like?
Yes.
That, that is the reality. We're not trying to scare anybody. This is what we can afford. When will we see this report again to see if that 78 is gonna go up? Or that 78 is gonna go down? Or that 12 is gonna go up on year three? Or that 12 is gonna go down? What is your final answer for that, for people that are watching this meeting tonight? Because when I look at this, you know, 78, I'm sure glad we're not, you know, Pasadena that had 250, or San Ana that had 500, or Coachella that had 300 and some just this week. But again, these are livelihoods, so.
Right.
It's like the canary in the coal mine. We know that it's coming. It's not, it's not a secret. It's not that the board is trying to be mean. It's not that we, you're hiding the money somewhere. I know sometimes as a, as a business official, you're accused of that. You have been very transparent, and I want to be very transparent as to what we can afford and what we cannot. So that is my question. When will we see another report to determine if that 78 is going up or going down?
Yes, so the 78, again, is exactly wrong, approximately right. And I say that because we, we're gonna have another update to the board in June, once the governor releases the May revision. By then, we'll know what the impacts of, you know, the tariff is gonna have on the economy, on employment, on enrollment, and the immigration policy, how that's gonna affect California residents. There are a lot of macroeconomic factors happening. And so certainly, you know, we, we're scheduled to do a presentation because we, you know, based on statutes, we have to deliver the budget to the county by June 30th. And so that means we have to do two board presentations. One in early June to deliver, to present the budget draft, and then the board pass, approve in the second meeting, the budget, so then we can meet the June 30th deadline, based on the May revision funding factors. Now, the key word you said is about, you know, fear, right? The goal is not to instill fear on, on livelihoods. That's never the goal. The goal is looking at a model based on the funding factors that we were given in January from the governor's budget proposal and applying wisdom, David's experience, his team's experience, creating a model that works, right? With minimal impact to staffing, because they're at the front lines. They're the ones delivering instruction. Minimal impact on programs. And then getting us to a positive certification without the risk of state receivership. So that's the purpose of the second interim report. It is also an art as opposed to a science. So that 78 is, I would say, is exactly wrong, okay? In fact, the numbers have already changed. And it does take time to generate the 166 pages of analysis and projections. So with that said, what I can say for sure is, in June, we will have another report presented to the board for public consumption.
And, and I guess that's where, that's where I want to be transparent because when I watch the news and I watch these districts, they too have to create, you know, this report. And so how, how did they not see that coming? How, how are they so far off? Like, that's just unexplainable to, I just cannot understand that.
We're also, since this is also live, given that, you know, we are at the switch. So the, another analogy is that, you know, we're at the switch. We see the freight train coming. We're actively addressing this. So we're not like, gonna wait for the governor's May revise. So leadership is actively working to address this with our labor partners.
Okay.
So things, that's why the numbers are gonna be exactly wrong.
Got it.
Okay.
All right, thank you to Dr. Lynn and thank you to Dr., Mr. Norton, David Norton. I appreciate you. No further questions, Mr. Breones?
Thank you, Trusty Padilla. Trusty Dr. Guzman, you have a question?
No, not so much a question, just a comment. I appreciate Mr. Norton and Dr. Lynn, steward of our district finances, and all the work that's gone into this. I, I think we're, your phrase, we're exactly wrong, approximately right. I think it just spot on with the macro, macroeconomic factors that are really, for the most part, unprecedented in terms of all at once. And I appreciate the comments that you've made about not focusing so much on instilling fear and potentially focusing on how many people we're gonna lay off. But on your thoughtfulness on how do we reduce potential loss of funding while at the same time, you know, keeping our district solvent and with positive certification? And again, not impacting teachers, which ultimately impacts students. So I appreciate your thoughtfulness in how you've been going about it. And even today's comments, again, it's, it's that balance of being open, honest, but also not instilling fear. So I appreciate both you and Mr. Norton for the presentation tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Guzman. If there's no further discussion, thank you, Dr. Lynn and Mr. Norton for your presentation tonight. At this time, is there a motion to approve the second interim financial report and board certification, the financial stability of the district for fiscal years 2425 and the two subsequent years, 2526 and 2627?
A move to approve?
Moved by Trusty Padilla, is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by Trusty Nguyen. There's no further discussion. All those in favor of approving the item, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? See none. Item number one is approved. Moving on to item number two, consider award of bid number 2024-25B6, roof replacement at a Royal High School and Almani High School project to San Marino Roof Company Incorporated. Is there a motion to approve this item?
A move to approve?
Moved by Trusty Padilla, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trusty Dr. Galavies. Any discussion? See none. All those in favor of approving item number two, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? See none. Item number two is approved. Item number three has been.
Pulled.
Pulled and sent, referred back to staff. So moving on to item number four. Consider approval of service agreement between Almani Union High School District and Marching Band Works for Music and Show Design at Almani High School. Is there a motion to approve this item?
Move to approve.
Moved by Trusty Dr. Guzman, is there a second?
I second, and I have a comment.
Seconded by Trusty Padilla. Discussion, Trusty Padilla, go ahead.
Yeah, Dr. Edward Zunigo or Dr. Rivas, is this, are we using the Prop 28 funding to pay for this since this would fall into the arts? If we are, I think that's, that's a great use of our funds to, to support El Monte High School. Are we using Prop 28 or the business person?
Yes.
We are, okay. No further questions, thank you.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion, the item has been moved and seconded. All those in favor of approving item number four, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? See none. Item number four is approved. Item number five, consider approval to ratify the service agreement between the Almani Union High School District and Med Waste Management for Medical Waste Disposal at the Almani Rosemead Adult School. Is there a motion to approve this item?
Move to approve?
Moved by Trusty Padilla, is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by Trusty Nguyen. Any discussion? See none. All those in favor of approving item number five, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? See none. Item number five is approved. Item number six, consider approval of resolution number 28-24/25 for Women's History Month. Is there a motion to approve this item?
Move to approve.
Moved by Trusty Dr. Galavies, is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by Trusty Dr. Guzman. Any discussion? See none. All those in favor of approving item number six, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? See none. Item number six is approved. Item number seven, consider approval of resolution number 29-24/25 for National Nutrition Month Proclamation. Is there a motion to approve this item?
A move to approve.
A second?
Moved by Trusty Nguyen, seconded by Trusty Padilla. Any discussion?
Just a quick question. I know that it's Nutrition Month and so forth. You, you know, on the provision two that we've had in this district, and I remember that before we would have to renew that, those lunch applications every year, but then we went to provision two and then we don't have to do it every, until every three years. Is this the third year or where are we just for that, just the lunch?
I need to check on that.
Okay, no problem, that's it. No further questions.
Thank you. The item has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? See none. Item number seven is approved. Item number eight, review, discuss, and revise board policies, administrative regulations, and exhibits, 4,000 and 6,000 series, first reading. Is there any discussion on this item? Okay, see none. Then staff, if you'll bring this back for the second reading and adoption at a future meeting. Moving on to item number nine, review, discuss, and revise board policies, administrative regulations, and bylaws, the 0000, 1,000, 2,000, and 9,000 series, first reading. Any discussion? See none. Okay, and staff, if you can bring this back for second reading and adoption. Moving on to item number 10, consider approval between the Almani Union Education Association, or EMUEA, and the Almani Union High School District to add a co-curricular stipend for girls' flag football and cheerleading assistant or non-varsity.
Move to approve?
Moved by Trusty Padilla, is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by Trusty Dr. Galavies. Any discussion?
Just a comment.
Go ahead.
I know I heard a trustee, our trustee, student trustee, talk about how cheerleading is, is now sport and, and flag football and, you know, how tough it is. And so I'm glad that it's getting the recognition and the respect that it has so long deserved. And I'm glad, I mean, those, I've seen those cheerleaders, you know, there at like 6 o'clock at night and having to go home really late and they haven't done their homework and they work, they work so hard. And I'm glad that finally it's been acknowledged that, that, those are sports. So just kudos to, is it the CIF Association that gave it that recognition? So that's it. I'm glad, I'm glad, long overdue.
Thank you. Any other discussion? See none. This move, item has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? See none. Item number 10 is approved. Item number 11, consider approval of ratification to the Almani Union Educators Association, EMUEA, unit agreement with the Almani Union High School District. Is there a motion to approve this item? Moved by Trusty Dr. Guzman, is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by Trusty Dr. Galavies. Any discussion? See none. All those in favor of approving item number 11, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? See none. Item number 11 is approved. Item number 12, consider approval of resolution number 30-24/25 to release employment of temporary certificated employees. Is there a motion to approve this item?
I move to approve and I have a comment.
Moved by Trusty Padilla, is there a second?
I second, but I also have a comment.
Seconded by Trusty Nguyen. Discussion, Mr. Padilla, go ahead.
Yeah, so this is just kind of routine. It's just a process, it's something, a, a normal process that all districts have to go to. And again, these are temporary employees that are fully aware that their position is like a one-year position and that, and the reason that we have to do this is that if we don't do this, then they would become permanent employees and we might not be able to fund them if that, if that funding did not come through. Am I understanding that correct, Dr. Zunigo? These 19 employees are employees that are in positions that we are funding through one-time funds?
That's correct. Education code requires that we notify employees before the end of the year,
That's correct. Education Code requires that we notify employees before the end of the year, as provided by the board, that they are released from their temporary assignment for that one year.
Okay. And, and these 19 positions fall in different categories throughout the master schedules at our, at all of our schools?
Their, in, their actual classroom instruction as well as, um, non-classroom instruction, certificated positions.
Can, can you give an example of some?
Sure. Uh, for example, we have psychologists that were hired to provide more support for an influx of, um, needs assessments for our students.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we had some people out on medical leave and there was a need, especially coming back from COVID. You have ongoing a request from parents about testing. So we made an effort to hire two additional psychologists for the district to support our students and our families in the IEP process too, and our schools obviously, because of the shortage of staff and also the need and the demand was there. That's one example. Uh, we also have initiatives from the school district. For example, you know, we made an effort to focus on math, right? You have, uh, six, I believe, six or seven math teachers that were hired temporarily to address some of the current needs of our district to support math. Uh, we're evaluating that, whether the, uh, reduction to 20 to one for IM1 or even 25 to, uh, 25 to one for IM2, I believe it's 25 to two, correct? It is, um, something that we will continue based on data, based on evidence, based on what has happened in the classrooms and what we see as well. Cause a lot of walkthroughs are happening, a lot of, uh, collection of data. It's not the NWA, but we're looking at, you know, how successful that, that actual staffing is. Um, so we are going to evaluate and bring it back to the board about what we have assessed and then provide you that update as well. Uh, other, other items that we've seen as well, um, we have OPL, we have increase of students that are online program, uh, for individual plans now. So with that increase, we had to bring additional staff to support those by credential purposes, also by counseling purposes as well. So those are another effort there too.
How many teachers were there, Dr. Zuniga?
I believe there's two OPL teachers that were hired.
Two OPL?
Yeah.
Wait, I'm just adding this up. Two psychs, six, uh, math toses, right?
Correct. I believe there's six math toses.
Uh, three, um, can't even read my writing. Three counselors?
There's seven, seven math to, I'm sorry, math teachers.
Seven, seven math toses or, or? And then three-
Total, um.
Twenty, you said two OPL teachers?
Two OPLs.
And then we have the three-
Psychologists.
Two psychologists.
Eleven.
We also have-
The three ELD, is it three or two ELD, uh, counselors?
Two, two EL counselors.
Two EL counselors, okay.
We also have, remember that, we also have some counselors that we, we have in our current counselor ratio to help support the reduction of our ratio to 350.
How many counselors were there?
I believe there's three total, if I'm not mistaken.
Three?
That are, uh, additional counselors that are added that are on temporary assignments right now. Some of these actual counselors are teachers that are currently out of their assignment to go into that assignment right now, gaining the experience as counselors. So when you do that, you also have to provide a one-year temporary assignment for that teacher who's actually doing the counseling work right now too. That applies to the total number of, uh, educators that we actually have on this list as well. That make sense?
Yeah, it totally makes sense. No, no, no.
Various different things that are happening at the same time.
Yeah, got it. And, but again, this is not, this is not just the Almani Union High School District doing this. All districts across the state of California must do this because it's ed code that tells us, not ed code, um-
Yeah, education code, yeah, education code.
Tells us we gotta do this. Okay.
That we must notify employees before the end of the year about their actual one-year, uh, your, your temporary assignment is, is coming to an end.
And la- last year when we did it, Ms. Torres, last year when we did it, after we figured out and you told us the exact number to the, to the last person, we, afterwards, we were able to hire everybody back with the exception of one person. Am I correct? Or do I remember that correctly or not?
Um, that's correct, Mr. Padilla. We, after all the temporaries, we only had one that did not return.
And the reason that we couldn't hire that person was because-
That was actually a credentialing issue and they weren't, they weren't no longer credentialed in the area we needed.
Got it. So a lot of these people, we gotta go through this process, but we will be able to hire them back if the funds allow.
I would caution, I would caution that because
Yes.
what, what the budget provided last year will not provide for the following school year.
Okay.
If we noted in the budget, also with the, the ongoing decline in enrollment, uh, through attrition of teachers that are, if they're retiring and if they're leaving us for that purpose of retirement, we'll account for that too.
Got it.
And see where we're at too.
So what you're saying is based on that number that I talked about earlier, the 78, and Dr. Lynn said that the 78 included the 19, right? It, it can also include, where it can change is how many people will be retiring. So that'll be part of that 78 to be able to get us to that, the next number by the end of June.
Yeah, what's most important is looking at our, our enrollment, number one. Uh, projected enrollment would, versus the amount of FTEs would be assigned to account for the projected enrollment at each schools.
Right.
And, uh, on top of that, you also have the additional support that we've had the one-time funding on.
Right.
So if the one-time funding is sunsetting, there's no money to pay that individual any longer. And one example that I can provide you, um, if I can, I think I found one, the temporary OPL teachers. The, the A through G grant is paying for those temporary OPL teachers. That will sunset in September of 2025. So we need to decide if there's a continued increase in OPL students, how we're gonna pay for those two OPL teachers to continue providing services to our students. That might be pretty much into the general fund or into other accounts or that we don't have planned at this point. So those are just different scenarios that we're gonna have to go through. Um, the other plan, uh, there is also the learning recovery block grant. Those are things that have supported us too. Uh, we are running out of money at the learning recovery block grant due, though it's, doesn't expire through 2028. There is potential opportunities to continue that service if it allows for the services that we need at the time. But that's just another idea. These, these one times are coming to an end. By 2028, everything will be wiped out. I believe that's the last one on the books.
So, so in June, when we approve the final LCAP and we get to our final number or, or last projection, at that point then, where, will you start looking at like the other funding sources or are we already starting to look at that now?
We're actually revisiting this now, but what's most important is that we're assessing, you know, what the priority would be to continue programming based on the assessment and success of the programs, right? Uh, and based on needs too. Uh, so obviously, we will bring to the board the recommendations and explain. And then we have a dialogue about where our priorities fit along, aligned to our LCAP plan, aligned to our goals for next year and to support of our most needed students as well.
Got it.
Lot happening over the next couple of weeks.
Yeah.
I understand the
Yeah.
the, the concern, uh, related to, you know, jobs. But, uh, just keep in mind that these are one-year temporary positions that at the end of the year, we, we sit down with those employees, we go through the process and we explain the, the responsibility for the year and that's, and that's what we can guarantee at this time. We can't guarantee an ongoing, um, assignment. We wish we could, but unfortunately, that's why they're called temporary positions.
That, thank you for that explanation. Um, no further questions, Mr. Breones.
Thank you, Trustee Padilla. Trustee Nguyen?
Uh, Dr. Zuniga, Mr. Padilla answered all the que, you know, my questions in my mind already, so I think, no more.
No more questions. Any other discussion from the board? Okay, see none. Uh, item number 12 has been moved and seconded. All those in favor of approving item number 12, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? See none. Item number 12 is approved. Okay, moving on to item number 13, discussion on board bylaws and ad hoc committee. Uh, I had brought this item last week to see if there was any interest, um, from the board. This is part of our governance, uh, study session that we had had, that we had last February, or in February. Um, so the, the ad hoc committee would provide updates to our bylaws that, uh, in order to modernize our processes and our protocols, but also would then, um, provide direction for a governance handbook. So I wanted to check with the, with the board to see who would be interested in serving on the board bylaws ad hoc committee.
Is this a committee of all board members or, or staff and board?
Uh, this would be board and staff and because it's an ad hoc committee, ideally, it's just two members and staff. Otherwise, if it becomes three members, then it becomes a brown act committee and we have to agendize meetings and public notice, all that stuff. So I wanted to see if there's any interest in, uh, from members on being on a, uh, ad hoc committee.
I would. I would be interested, yeah.
Okay.
Aye.
You would as well?
Yes.
Um, so again, two versus three?
Yeah.
So do you guys have a, is there a strong preference from either one of you or do you guys wanna flip a coin or? Cause I'd like to, to be part of the discussion as well.
I see two, Dr. Galavies.
Thank you, Dr. Guzman. So, Dr. Galavies and I will work with staff on setting up, um, meetings to address our, our bylaws. And then, uh, obviously, whatever recommendations the committee makes, we'll come back to the board for, for adoption. Okay, that concludes our regular agenda.
Can I, uh, just clarify one thing and, and, uh, item number nine was not, there was no action taken, but I, I failed to inform you that we, we do have to, um, we're requesting that removing the first reading for bylaw 9270 and exhibit 9270 from today's agenda. Uh, and the reason for that is because we did rely on gamut to provide the reading, but we recently got an update about, um, information that we need to add. Uh, that includes the title change of one position, the CBO to Assistant Superintendent, uh, for Business Services. And then the other one was, um, the addition of the Director of HR position as well, which was not in, it's not included in our, actually bylaws right now. And then also, there's a new category that's being recommended, adds a new disclosure category to the code. Uh, so just the background information that agencies are required to amend their conflict of interest codes when necessitated by change in circumstances pursuant to government code section 87306. And we just got this information, so will be added on to another first reading in the future meeting, okay? But you're gonna see the next time that, in consent, this item will not be on there. I, I just wanted to be clear about that.
Gotcha, so
Thank you.
Although it was on the agenda today, we really, since we didn't take any action anyway, you're gonna bring it back?
Yes, with the exception of-
A new first reading, with the exception of those two?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then once we, once we make the changes to those two, then we'll bring those back?
It, it'll be back on a first reading independent from this, these other ones.
Gotcha. Thank you for that clarity. All right. That is our regular agenda. Moving on to roundtable. Uh, we'll start with Trustee Nguyen.
Uh, I, I would like to request to bring the study session on the math. But you know, we have two new mo, board member over here, so we, we need to have it. Yep, and that, I want to bring it forward. Study session, a math study session.
Math study session, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, um, members, is there, is there consensus with that? And we can have staff set a date or do we want to look at our calendars now? Uh, I'm open to, to setting a date now. That's, that's okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Nguyen, did you have a, a time or a time of the month or, or a specific day in mind?
I do recommend if we do have, we have one meeting in April, so we may apply a second one since we already have two in March.
Okay, so second meeting in April would be the 16th?
Can we do it sooner rather than later?
Well, I think in, are we gonna do our, our ethics in March?
Yes, I think that was what you had.
Yeah, so, yeah, let's move it to, to April, um, cause we're already doing ethics in March. I don't wanna overload everybody.
When is that?
We haven't set up a date. That's, uh, that was my item to bring up as well today.
Let's deal with that one first, no?
We can do that.
The ethics one first?
Well, if, if you're saying that we're gonna do it in March, um, first, no, cause you wanna move the other one to April.
Right, well, because that's what we're discussing right now. Maybe we can go back to March, but since the item we're discussing right now is a math study session.
Okay.
So if we wanna do it in April then, that would be the second meeting date, which would be April 16th? Yeah, April 16th.
16?
Yeah.
I won't be here.
You're not available?
No.
How about?
The ninth, if you wanna do back-to-back, it would be the ninth.
If we don't wanna have a gap, how about the ninth?
I can do the ninth.
Yes, yeah.
It's the second Wednesday?
I can do the ninth.
Ninth? You good, Mr. Padilla?
Yeah, I'm gonna do the ninth.
So me, uh, I'm sorry, April 9th for math study session?
Math study session, what time?
It's our nor, our normal five o'clock?
Five o'clock?
Okay.
Okay.
And by the way, that was something that was recommended at the, uh, Laxton meeting when we're talking about the, uh, new math framework. Is that boards have a math study session, so I think we're, we're headed out of the park.
Right.
All right, any other items, Mr. Nguyen?
Before I forget, can-
Thank you.
Can we include the, the math framework, you know, like just as part of that?
The math framework?
Yeah, just on that night?
Yeah.
That could be part of the, yeah.
Yeah.
If you wanna do that.
Yeah, if you have any, if you have any specific items, just send them over so we-
That, before I left me, cause you said that you touched on that at Laxton.
She noting that? I will note it. Math framework, that was, okay, she's taking the notes on that. Request.
You look like you were deep in thought. Okay. Gotcha. Thank you, Mr. Nguyen and Mr. Padilla.
No items.
No items. Uh, Gal, Trustee Galavies, Dr. Galavies, no items. Trustee Guzman?
Um, just for, um, not necessarily the March, uh, the next March meeting, but maybe in April, um, Dr. Rivas to have, um, a presentation on mental health, um, services and support and, um, the framework that we have. Just because it's been, it was touched on today about, um, absenteeism and immigration and everything going on. I think it's, um, I know you, the information has been provided in the Friday memo, but if we can get a request of presentation, a full presentation, please.
Okay, I'll work-
And that's it.
Thank you. I'll work with Dr. Zuniga and staff on setting a date and, and, uh, if there's any content or specifics that you want included, let Dr. Zuniga know. Okay, um, Dr. Zuniga?
I do have, um, some dates that I'm trying to get down for our ribbon cutting ceremony for our Family and Community Engagement Center. Dr. Lynn, help me out, cause I, I don't, can't find my dates here. Do you remember what we just talked about? For the dates, we're looking at the first, uh, first, second week of, um, April?
Yes, we have the Family Community Engagement Center ribbon cutting, uh, for March 26th.
March 26th.
Wednesday, uh, five to seven, or starting at five.
Starting at-
There you go. I got it on my calendar.
What day, what month?
At March 26th?
26th.
And you said at five o'clock?
At five o'clock.
Five o'clock, yeah.
Ribbon cutter? Is it a ribbon cut?
Ribbon cutting for the, yeah, Family Community Engagement Center at South Almani High School. That was the former, uh, uh, professional development center.
What is it called again?
Family and Community Engagement Center.
Where is it?
At South Almani High School.
Almani.
Yeah, we'll put it on your calendar. We just wanted to see if the date worked. And again, it, it's, it's more ceremonial. It's not a board meeting or-
Family and Community what?
Center.
Engagement Center.
Engagement Center?
Yeah, Family and Community Engagement Center.
South Almani.
That's a mouthful, Engagement Center.
Five o'clock?
Five o'clock?
Uh-huh.
It could be, it could be five o'clock. I think that's the best time for everybody, right? I think for those of you that work. We're gonna add it.
Memo.
Yeah, we'll add on there. We just wanted to confirm today.
Okay.
And we also had a groundbreaking date. You have that one on. I'm looking for mine. I don't see it on my calendar though.
So the Rosemead groundbreaking date is April 16th, also a Wednesday.
April 16th.
I know you're not available, but, but that's just a date that we had proposed, if that's okay?
April 16?
Yes.
16? One six?
One six, yes.
RHS what?
This is the, no, not RHS, Roseme Center, Adult Center?
Adult Education Complex.
Adult Education Complex.
At the Rosemeat Center.
And what's the time for that?
That's 5:00 PM as well.
That'll, that work for the majority of you guys? I know Dr. Galavies not available.
That's groundbreaking?
Yes, groundbreaking.
Five?
I guess.
Uh, five, uh, five o'clock or?
Five o'clock.
For everyone?
Okay. PCC site, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I think we have the 16th of April for the groundbreaking for the Rosemeat Center Education, Adult Education Complex. And then we also have the, uh, ribbon cutting program. And that's on the 26th of March for the Family and Community Engagement Center.
Okay.
Wonderful, thank you.
And what about this other thing you talked about? When is that?
The ethics training?
Okay, so now we have the ethics, right? That's, so that's when I
Yeah.
I wanted to bring it up. Um, so our March calendar, wanna take a look at it? Um, for the, for the next board meeting, it's the 19th, so we have the following week. Um, I have to also work with legal counsel on making sure that we have somebody available. So perhaps maybe two days that I could provide to them and then I'll confirm with you for Friday on the date.
Sorry, say, say that again.
Does, uh, 24th through the 28th, any of those days?
Well, we had, a royal moved their open house to the 27th.
That is on Thursday.
And then we have the 26th, we have that ribbon cutting.
26.
So it would have to be the 25th.
Yeah. 25th is one day.
Or the 24th or the 28th.
So we get a day off before we like go hard and heavy?
I'm okay with the 24th.
We can do Monday, the 24th?
I can do the 24th.
I can also do the 24th.
That works.
Okay, so let me confirm with legal counsel and then I'll confirm in my memo on, on Monday. Put it on your calendar for now.
Okay. So, so what is it?
Ethics study. Ethics study session.
Sorry, Doug?
Yeah, it's four o'clock, but we'll, we'll wrap it up. If we can start that one at five-thirty, would that be okay?
Yeah.
I'll, I'll send you the time, okay? Five-thirty?
That's tentative.
District office?
District office, correct.
Five-thirty?
Five-thirty. Well, aren't you here legal? Can't you look at your calendar? For me, Terrence? Five-thirty. Okay. All right.
God, that's a busy month. I look my calendar, it's a bit, yeah, yeah, busy month.
That's it, President.
Thank you, Mr. Dr. Zuniga. And I only have one item and it kind of, it bemoans me to have to bring this up, but it's something that needs to be addressed. So, after, uh, after my meeting with the South Almani High School PTA, um, earlier this week, I did speak to an individual there who brought a concern to me that was, um, very, uh, very concerning to me. So, uh, at a PTSA breakfast in December, or lunch, excuse me, in December, it was, I was informed that a trustee member approached the South Almani High School PTSA parents and engaged in a conversation with them and, um, indicated that, uh, this trustee was upset with quote-unquote some South Almani High School people, uh, and then clarified that, uh, he was upset with the admin regarding, uh, some, the summer school program taking place there, that it had an impact on construction, um, and this trustee said that those individuals will be found. Indicated that Dr. Morales was first on this list of people and, um, that he was not happy with them and, you know, he would deal with them. The parent went on to share that this trustee went on to say that they were the elected representative for that area, that the PTSA parents were not to go through the administration and specifically the principal, that they were to go through the trustee. Um, that individual, if it's not clear, was Mr. Padilla who's having this conversation according to this parent. Mr. Padilla told the parents that he was upset with the administration and that parents were not to go through the principal, not to go through the admin, they were to go through him. Uh, a parent shared that they had set up a meeting with district staff to discuss an issue, at which point, Mr. Padilla chastised and scolded the individual and said, quote, "What did I just tell you? You don't go through staff, you go through me." This individual was very upset by these comments, uh, not just because they were scolded, but she felt that, one, the comments Mr. Padilla were out of line, um, about anybody going through an individual trustee. Um, two, she also felt that they were, the comments were out of line because the individual Mr. Padilla was referring to, um, the principal was not there to defend themselves. She indicated that, you know, up, up until this point, she didn't have a problem with Mr. Padilla, you know, despite his not appearing to be sincere to them, um, but she felt that it was inappropriate and it was a, quote, "A slap in the face" to Dr. Morales and the rest of the staff at South Almani High School, um, for Mr. Padilla to make those comments.
Mr. President, um, given that this item was on the agenda, I would advise maybe taking it to the, uh, step of the topics to be issued, moving, topics to be addressed or issues moving forward, just to avoid there being an, an issue with the, it not being on the agenda.
Sure thing. So, um, based on advice from the legal counsel, I'll leave it at that. And so, what I'm asking for tonight, um, for a future agenda item, it's consensus, consensus from the board to direct legal counsel uh, to investigate these claims by the parents, um, and to bring findings back to the board, hopefully within the next thirty days at a next future April board meeting, um, on those findings to see if these allegations or, or these accusations are in fact true. Um, and that way, the board can discuss and then take action on those allegations. That's the only item that I have tonight. I'd like consensus from the board, um, on my recommendation to direct legal counsel to investigate this matter. Dr. Guzman, you have a question or comments? Dr. Galavies? No comments? Is there consensus from the board to move forward directing legal counsel to investigate this matter?
Do we vote?
It's not a vote. It's just, I just need to know if there's at least two others that want to give direction. It's not an actual vote.
Well, if the parent is concerned, I think we do need to look into it, so yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, Mr. Nguyen? Um, yeah, okay, Mr. Padilla?
Sure.
Okay.
I have nothing to hide, so, uh, I've always been a defender of parent engagement and parents and so, completely deny or any, any of your allegations.
So we have direction?
So, um, because, uh, Ms. Torres has us doing some, um, staff training on the complaint processes and processes in the district and quite familiar with, um, the various, uh, procedures that are in place when complaints are lodged. There is no specific policy or administrative regulation that applies to complaints against board members, but there is one that applies, uh, for complaints against employees. So my recommendation would be that the district follow that as close as possible, um, in any, you know, in any similar situation which this would seem to fall in. So that'd be my recommendation, that we would, um, we'll look into it in accordance with that AR, um, which I don't remember the number, but there, it's, there's one in there.
So you'll, you'll, uh, ensure that the individual is contacted and if, and that the complaint process is adhered to in order to move forward with this investigation?
Yes, and there's provisions in there. There's some timelines in there that I think are helpful, um, to follow. So we'll look to that and do whatever needs to be done and treat it the same as we would, uh, a complaint against an employee brought by the public.
Understood. And then the, the second item that I had, unrelated to this, but related to the same individual, and if necessary, um, again, cause if there's a process about board members, uh, board member complaints, this isn't necessarily coming from the public. This is something that I, um, am bringing forward. Um, there's also a concern that about misrepresentation that Mr. Padilla, um, shared on district business at our annual education conference in Anaheim earlier in December. Was brought to my attention that, um, Mr. Padilla had included in his profile at the conference that he had an EDD degree. Um, and then at, at a dinner, Mr. Padilla actually admitted to doing that. Um, I had not brought the item up because, you know, I wasn't sure if it warranted anything, but considering other complaints that have now arisen, um, I would like to include that as part of the complaint process as well. If necessary, if you need me to fill out any paperwork, um, I will do so, um, to include this as part of the, the complaints, uh, from this parent.
If I follow you correctly, it's, is it directly related to the parent's complaint or?
No, this is a second complaint.
Yeah, I, I'd recommend reducing that one to writing for, for, um, certainty, so that we'd understand what the specifics of it are. The other, um, complaint, either we'd ask for that to be in writing as, as well from the parent or whoever. That's part of the policy that I'm referencing, um, includes a, a provision for that. I would recommend, uh, essentially treating that as a complaint being lodged by you. That will be separately looked at as an independent complaint, but following the same process as we described.
Understood. So then if, if, at your, with your advice, then I will file a written complaint, um, so that it, there's, there's documentation and we adhere to the process.
Yes, and, um, for the record, that's the advice I would give any member of the public, any member of the staff. As we had discussed previously and I've been able to discuss with your staff in these trainings, part of the reason for these, um, policies is to, um, provide some uniformity in handling these and protect, um, basically someone accused on the one end of the complaint and someone on the other end making it as well. So, um, to the extent we can follow the process, I advise doing so.
Thank you for that. Those are the only items that I had tonight. Moving on to closed session, the board will not be reconvening into closed session. Mr. Legal Counsel, if you'll please report out from closed session.
Uh, yes, Mr. President, with reference to the published agenda, um, section two, I'm sorry, section A, two subsection A. The board received information, no final action was taken. And item B, the board received information, no final action was taken, and that concludes the readout from closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Legal Counsel. Moving on to adjournment of meeting, there's no objection from the board tonight. I have two adjourned memories that I'd like to read into the record. First, um, I'd like to adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of a beloved member of our school community, Ms. Genevieve Genie Valadell. Ms. Genie was a dedicated and cherished part of the Almani Roseme Adult School family for over two decades. Her journey with the Almani Roseme Adult School began as a student from two thousand to two thousand and four, after which she transitioned into her role as a parent education assistant in two thousand and four. In two thousand and seven, she took on the role of parent education teacher, a position she held with great passion and commitment until her passing. For over twenty years, Ms. Genie profoundly impacted the lives of countless students, parents and colleagues. She was known for her kindness, patience and unwavering support for those around her. Whether in the classroom or in the community, she was always willing to lend a helping hand, offer a listening ear and uplift others with her warm presence. Her dedication to empowering families and fostering a love for learning made a lasting difference in the lives of many. A col, a colleague fondly described Ms. Genie as a shining star with a smile as, as big as the night sky. Her compassionate spirit and genuine care for others touched the hearts of everyone who had the privilege of knowing her. While her absence leaves a deep void, her legacy of kindness, generosity and dedication will, to education will continue to inspire us. Our thoughts and heartfelt condolences goes out to Ms. Genie's family, friends, students, and though, all those who were fortunate enough to experience her life. She will be deeply missed, but never forgotten. Additionally, I ask that we adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of South Almani High School teacher, Richard Heileman. Mr. Richard Heileman, beloved teacher at South Almani High School, passed away on Thursday, February sixth at the age of fifty-seven after a courageous battle with cancer. Mr. Heileman grew up in Sierra Madre, attending Sierra Madre and Edison Elementary Schools before graduating from Polytechnic High School in nineteen eighty-five. He went on to earn a double major in art and English from University of California, Berkeley, and later obtained his teaching credential and master's degree in education from Cal State LA. He joined the Almani Union High School District as an English teacher at South Almani High School on September fifth, twenty twenty-six, where he made a lasting impact on countless students. I too had the privilege of working with Mr. Heileman while I was a classified employee at South Almani High School. Dedicated and passionate educator, Mr. Heileman was deeply moved by students who credited him with inspiring them to read their first book. Over time, he expanded his teaching to include Art One classes and later pioneered the first AP art history courses at South Almani High School. His love for his subject, for the subject and his students made him a truly exceptional teacher. Mr. Heileman is survived by his wife, Yolleta, career guidance counselor at South Almani High School. His elder daughter, Sarah, recent graduate of Cal Poly Pomona, and his younger daughter, Emily, who will graduate from middle school this year. He is also survived by his mother, Sarah Lois Heileman, a longtime AP English teacher at Roseme High School, as well as the family's beloved dog, Frida, who became part of their lives after being found on campus and has since brought them great joy. If there's no objection tonight, we are adjourned at nine fifty-five P M. Thank you.